Testing. I wonder if we could get someone to comment, just to let us know that they can hear us.
We can hear you.
So wonderful. Thumbs up? Alright, alright, you guys.
John needed a hand with Wi-Fi for his computer.
Okay, just due to the interest of time, welcome everyone who is out there watching us on Zoom. As you might know, you're seeing us live, we're in the board meeting and we're so excited that, I feel like it's a milestone for our country, that I really almost got emotional. And everyone around here probably thinks I'm crazy because I've been so excited that we've reached the point where the CDC and our governors recommended the guidance of not having to wear a mask if you're vaccinated. And so this is a very exciting time and it's been a while since all of us have been together in person, so really excited to be here today. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order and I'm going to start with the flag salute. Okay, so is this okay? You can hear me okay? Good? Okay. Alright, just bear with us as we're working out, working through it. So we're going to start with our roll call here. Mr. Reimers?
Here.
Mr. Spear?
Here.
Mr. Hochmanowitsch?
Present.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. McCucci? Mr. Jackson?
Here.
And Mr. Klein?
Also here.
Thank you. Alright, this meeting is being recorded and can be accessed, obviously, live as well as a recorded version tomorrow. So today, we have a lot of stuff on the agenda and so I do want to just let everyone know that I am going to be doing my best to move swiftly through our agenda because otherwise I think we might be here past midnight and we certainly don't want that.
Is there a Phillies game tonight, Mr. Reimers?
Okay. Okay. We did, we did have an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss a personnel matter. And next on the agenda is the acceptance of a board member resignation. And so I'll need a motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer Weed and that's stated on 5/12/21.
So moved.
Regretfully seconded.
Discussion. Yes, it was, we will miss her. I'm the only woman here now, well, on the board, thank goodness for Dr. Hoffman and Nancy Anne.
So if we move to table, does that mean we can just?
What's that? Oh my gosh. Terry.
We're not used to being together, ma'am.
I deserve that one. Alright, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to our Board of Director interviews. So we do have three applicants that are meeting with us today. Each applicant will have a total amount of five minutes to, I'm going to try to condense this down as close as possible to five minutes. We'll give the candidate a couple minutes, maybe three or so minutes to share with the board why they feel like they are the best candidate for the role and then give the board a few minutes, maybe two or so minutes, three minutes, to ask any direct questions. So with that, our first candidate, Dr. Harner, who would that be?
Can I just ask a question about how, can you go over how we're going to do this? Because I think we've done it one other time.
Yeah.
So how does it kind of get to the vote and then?
That's a good, that's a good question.
Multiple people? It's open.
Okay. Well, it's going to be sort of a similar, it's a similar concept of ranked choice voting. And so in the past, many of you are aware that the very first person that was nominated was able to be voted. So it was unfair in that the other candidates who maybe didn't get the opportunity to be nominated first weren't considered. And so what we're going to do instead is after each of the candidates have their opportunity to speak, we will have the opportunity to motion and second for a candidate. Any candidate that is motion and second will have, will be on the table for all of us to vote. And if no one candidate gets majority of the five votes, because there has to be five, correct? So if no candidate gets five, then the candidate with the least amount of votes will, like, let's say we had three candidates, all three of them had some amount of votes, then the person with the least amount of votes will be eliminated and we do another round and...
You only vote for one candidate then?
Correct. So when you...
Oh, see, there's it.
You can only get one vote?
Yeah.
Per candidate or per?
Each candidate is put up in front of us in turn, correct? We are, but when it comes time to vote, we can, the candidate... Correct. My point, my point is this, a candidate is nominated and seconded, that candidate must be voted on. One, the first candidate who was nominated and second comes up and we vote, we just vote on them. We can all vote yes, or we could, or some of us could vote yes or no.
We're going to vote a name.
If the next person comes up, when we, again, we vote, we can, some of us can vote yes, some of us...
No, that's not, that's not how we're doing it.
I think we better do all the interviews first.
We are, we are.
We're going to do all the interviews and then you vote for the person, the name the person that you want to vote for.
That one person.
That one person.
You're suggesting you can't vote.
That's how we did it last time.
Disagree, but... Yeah, I mean, I...
It was only two candidates.
I kind of disagree with that thinking, but I'll let it go.
No, that is how we voted when you and Steve came on, because I remember that, because I was confused at that.
I'm open-minded, so let's get the show on the road and we can talk about it.
Well, no, no, I mean, we need to know the rules before we get the show on the road. Let's be very clear.
I would like to make sure I understand.
Okay, so what are you suggesting because?
Between the first time, we've done it, I've done it twice where we placed somebody. And I think they were done, sort of the first person up, if they got five, we didn't move on.
Right.
Unfair. We thought that was unfair.
Yeah, there was some discussion around that, I don't remember exactly what. And so I thought we were...
Yeah, that's my point. So like, assume for a moment the first person comes up and got five. What if the next person came up and got seven?
But that person didn't get the chance.
Correct. So this is my point, why you have to be able to vote for more than one person. You have to.
So yeah, that's, that's what I agree. So we do all the interviews, then we bring them back. We can, we vote for each one individually. If they get more than five, then we have a runoff between whoever gets more than five. If all three of them get five, then we're just going to continuously going until...
Once you finish the interview and somebody gets five votes, they're appointed.
Jeff, we're suggesting that, I mean, is that wrote law or can we change that as a policy? Because our policy, in that case, the first person nominated, you have to get, if you want a certain guy nominated, you've got to make sure you're, they're the first one...
You can nominate whoever you want and when you get to the point where you're casting votes, once somebody gets five votes, you've taken a board action to appoint somebody.
And we could, we could legitimately vote for two, like, the way yours discussing it, we could vote for two people and two people could get five votes. And that's why I'm saying...
No, Jeff's saying, Jeff's saying, the moment you say aye five times, you're done. You've, by law, by Robert's rule, appointed that person.
But I, it's a policy.
That's what he's, that's what he's saying. Well, this is, that's what I'm asking.
Doesn't, doesn't it make more sense that you finish the interviews, you make the nominations and see who gets nominated, and then you do a roll call vote for the nominees and see how many people get how many votes?
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, so we...
If somebody gets one, two, and four, or whatever, you drop off the low person and go to the next round and whoever gets five votes.
That's what I was suggesting.
And say who we're voting for.
What do you do when, what do you do if you get a four-four split?
Well, you keep, you see if anybody changes their mind, if you get to the point where you don't, it's going to be, the court's going to decide.
Right. By the way, I think that some people from the public were saying they could not hear us. Okay. Okay. Alright, go ahead.
Just don't, don't forget to unmute.
DeLiberato? Okay, that's fine.
How many? Three or four?
Three. Hello?
Good evening. Thank you for being with us. If you could just tell us your name. And we all know that, I guess, the region is, they're all almost the same in this particular...
Yep.
Okay, so tell us your, where you live and share with us why you feel like you're the best person for this position.
Okay, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jen Gross. I live in Milford Township. I am currently on the ballot for Region Two for the, for the school board position in November. I'm a lifelong resident of Bucks County. I grew up in Hilltown, born and raised there. I currently live in Quaker Town with my, my husband and my daughter. We've lived there for 17 years. And we've had an excellent experience with the, with the Quaker Town School District. My daughter went through PAF and then Milford and then the high school. And during her time at PAF Elementary School, I volunteered there in the classroom, first grade through fifth grade, fundraising events, field day, all those type of things. She had a great experience there and I was happy for the opportunity. The three of us are active in the community. We volunteer for a local food pantry in Trump Bowersville. We collect food and donate it, we collect food from local donors and drop it there once a month. We do, we support other local charities and we also do highway cleanup in Richland Township. So a little bit about me, my entire career has been in education, first pedagogy and then andragogy. So I have, I hold both a bachelor's and a master's degree in education. I began my career as an elementary school teacher in the Lancaster School District, teaching third and fifth grades. After I had my daughter, I went, I moved into the corporate world, but I stayed in education. I work in learning and development at a pharmaceutical, excuse me, pharmaceutical company. We support the scientists and the research labs, creating learning and development for them. I have worked as an instructional designer, curriculum designer, project manager, and and as a trainer. So I'm certified in adult learning theory, I have a master's in instructional design and I am a certified PMP project manager. So my current role at the pharmaceutical company is an operations lead. And that is the perfect role for me because it gives me the opportunity to combine my experience in education with the business end of things. So I manage two multimillion dollar budgets. I work with vendors, I hire contractors, and I work with the federal government on programs that are often when something we're doing at the pharmaceutical companies funded by the federal government and we need to be in compliance. I'm in charge of putting education out there to keep our workers in compliance. So my background in education, combined with my business skills and my ties to the community, I think make me a good fit for the board. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you, thank you so much. At this point, I will open it up to any board members who might want to ask you any questions.
Do you want to go in some type of order or I think that might be the...
Yeah, policy has always been one question per board member for each candidate. And typically, it's preferred that you ask the same question of each candidate. That's not law, it's not written anywhere, but just to keep things fair to all the candidates. It's just been policy, I'm not saying you have to do it that way, just throwing out what we did in the past.
Do you want to start with me or Keith and just go around?
Not everyone may want to ask a question and that's okay, I just wanted to throw that out there. So I know we are on a time crunch here and not to disrespect anyone's time, but you want to go ahead and go around?
Sure, I can go if you want. Oh, Keith's ready to go?
Jen, hi, how are you? So quickly, what's the most pressing issue you think's facing the school district?
The most, I'm sorry, say it again.
The most pressing issue that we are dealing with is the school district.
I would say the budget, finding the right amount of, the right money to fit the right projects. There's a lot of big, big expenses coming up and unfortunately, I think it's going to have to, it's going to affect people's taxes and it's also going to affect possibly other projects that get cut, excuse me, programs that get cut.
Thank you.
You are...
Hi, Ren.
You are our current candidate for the November election.
I am.
As is another of the members who is applying for this evening.
Yes.
Neither of you had board experience prior to seeking election in November.
Correct.
Yet you're seeking to be appointed now. And you will still have to succeed in your bid in November.
That's correct.
Does this not give you an unfair advantage against your opponent? Thereby, I question whether or not it is the correct course of action to seat either candidate when you're both up for election in November, to simply allow the voters to decide on the two of you and not give an unfair advantage to one by seating them now? Do you disagree?
No, I, I understand what you're saying. I bet I think that we both have an equal chance, whether we're, whether we're here tonight and again, we have, we've all had opportunity, oh, I say there's two of us. We've both had the opportunity to talk with the public, make, we've been out on social media, we've been out knocking on doors and we will have, we will be meeting people at the polls during the primary and we will have a chance again in November. So I don't, I don't know that being put on the board tonight will necessarily sway people. I think it's more of an interaction with someone.
Good.
Said you're on the ballot in November. I need to know how you did this before the primary.
How I got this together before?
No, no, you said you're on the ballot in November. How so? The primary hasn't even happened yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not on the ballot in November. We, the primary...
Oh, okay. Oh, no, no, it's okay.
I say that, you know, granted I get through the primary.
Yeah.
Is that, is that your question?
That actually was my question.
I'm sorry if I misled you there, no, I don't have any special tricks, nothing, not that I remember.
I had one quick one. What did you do to, to prepare for being on the board, whether it's the election or just, you know, seeking this opening, which at the time, why, I'm not exactly sure of the timeline, but I believe, I don't know if you knew when you had started your campaign that this seat would be opening up, did you?
No, I didn't know that this would definitely open up. I had a feeling that Jenny was going to be leaving, but I wasn't sure that she was. And then, you know, we got closer and closer to November, so I thought she was not leaving.
Oh, well, that wasn't the, the real question I had was, what did you do to prepare then? For either, either scenario?
Okay, alright, so I've been thinking about the school board for a long time. So over the last year or two, I've been watching school board meetings regularly. I've even been watching a lot of old ones, watching the recordings, making sure I'm examining the discussions that have been had, the arguments for, for a lot of different major decisions. I have been on, on the school board's website, excuse me, on the school district's website, reviewing the administrative chart to get to know the administration a little bit better, reviewing policies and procedures that are in place in the district. I've been interacting in parent discussion groups to see what's important to them so that I can get a feel for what I, what I have to do in my job. I even had an interview with a handful of teachers in the school district just to get their perspective on what it's like as a teacher to work in the school district. So those are all things I've done within the, the school district. Outside of Quaker Town School District, I have been, I participated in a school board training that was sponsored by the League of Women Voters. One was through Bucks County, another one was through the Education Policy and Leadership Center. That was just the other week, I participated in that. I have been reading through information on the PBSA's website, they have a lot of great learning materials there. And I've also formed a network of incumbent school board candidates and current candidates through Bucks County Network that I met up with. So I've been meeting with some of them and getting their input on what it's like to be a school board member.
That's a lot more than I did.
Very well done. Well, thank you so much.
I thought of one question, since you made something, sorry, I'll be fast. What impact would you like to make as a board member?
What impact? I would like to just, I think that the school district does an excellent job. They provide the best education, I think, around. I'm thrilled with what my daughter has and my, the impact I want to have is that it continues, that it doesn't take any turns.
Thank you so much for applying, we really appreciate it and we'll be voting after we finish with all the candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. I didn't want to, want to mispronounce your name, Glenn Iusa?
Yes, it's I O Sue.
I O Sue?
It's Americanized, it's originally Italian.
Okay.
I O Sue A in Italy. And since I was a kid, I always pronounced it I O Sue, or I just raised my hand after Glenn. But I just, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and apply for the interim seat, which is vacated. And, you know, in general, I sent a short, two-page credential on myself, not sure if everyone received that from the board? Okay. So it was a little different than maybe some of the other information I've been sharing, but just want to make sure everyone's aware of my background that's relevant to a school board, you know, budgeting, planning, working with multi-year, multimillion dollar programs, trying to find cost-saving reduction measures. My background, obviously bio-environmental engineering is relevant to more of the environmental abatement that you're probably going through with looking at QE renovations. You know, I've done renovations, new home construction, dealt with going to Harrisburg for Pennsylvania Chamber of Business and Industry, working on, commenting on legislation that affects our communities. So I have a lot of relevant background in my experience as a consultant. And I felt compelled to help out the board in their times of needs. I, I want to commend, my hats off to this board for all of the work that you've guys put in during COVID. I mean, it's phenomenal how you guys stuck in there and helped the kids go back to school and it's, it's a tribute to a great community that we're in. So whatever I can do to help our community, I'm all for. I was happy to, you know, on behalf of PAF Elementary, get an invitation to help out with the redistricting committee, because that's a very sensitive topic, as we all know. Lots of nights and weekends and hats off to the assistant here. Great job in controlling and guiding us to these decisions. But there's a lot on our agenda, you know, a lot on the agenda tonight. The finances, doing a great job. I, when I listen to this gentleman to my right, I'm watching it like carefully, like I'm watching the Federal Reserve Chairman, you know? Every key word he says, you know, how it affects us, he does a great job, you know, and analyzing it. But, you know, a great way of analyzing and sharing, you know, upfront information to us and as you're making your decisions, how these decisions are going to affect us for the next years to come. So, you know, I just want to be short and sweet and I do appreciate your time and figured to open up to questions. I think my credentials are self-explanatory, you know, in terms of relevancy of working with stakeholders. We all have various personalities in the room here, lots to contribute for our community and I think you guys are doing a great job. And if I can support that in any way, I'd be glad to join you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone who, in my opinion, is willing to serve in, in this capacity is a saint because, of course, this, this can be a difficult position and it is unpaid. So you really do have to care about, about being a part. So, so thank you. And with that, I'm going to start, should I start on this side again? And I'm going to allow board members a few minutes to ask you some questions.
Sure, thank you. Go ahead.
Glenn, first off, thank you for volunteering on the redistricting committee. What you guys did was great, the presentation you gave us, you know, as a committee was awesome. So thank you very much for that. My question to you is, what do you think is the most important issue this board is dealing with regarding the school district as we, as we're sitting today?
The most important issue that the school district is facing right now, I believe, if you look at the expenditures, you know, I just, simple math, you're, you know, you're working with a very little sliver of a pie and a lot of fixed costs and you have a lot of debt. 140 million in debt, 120 million dollar budget, 50 million in salaries, 30 million in benefits, 20 million in reserves, just round numbers. So you're dealing with some heavy finances that are going to impact our community for years to come. So, you know, tax increases has always been a concern for our community. You know, there was reference to the Moody's Credit, they're having concerns with the amount of debt that we're taking on as a community. And you're, there's a big decision before us to spend another, maybe 30 million. So that's increasing the debt. So I know a lot of that debt, the 140 million was, you know, 30 million for renovations to nighting and 80 million was relevant to the high school. So I think that's one of the biggest challenges you're facing, you know, put aside COVID, that's COVID's major factor upfront. But if you took away COVID, that would be the financial aspects of the biggest decisions you're dealing with right now.
Thank you.
You are the current candidate for the election in November. Or, or in the one, in the one in May.
Thank you.
Assuming you are successful in being seated tonight, you will, in essence, be an incumbent board member in advance of the May's primary. And assuming you are victorious in May's primary, you will be an incumbent during the general election campaign leading to November election. Do you not see that this may give you an unfair advantage over your opponent in that same election and do you see this as an issue?
Yes, I do. I'm honest, I'm practical. I do believe if I was selected as a running candidate on a ballot, that gives me an unfair advantage over my, Jen Gross, who was just before you. You know, and if you're in an election, a public election, I believe strongly that the voters should have a say on who they elect. I also understand the challenges that you have here in trying to fill someone of good qualifications to help you in the next few months because there's a lot on your agenda. You know, I did personally look at the previous interviews that you did before for interim seats and, you know, personally, I was very impressed with Rock, you know, who you had here for, I guess, 18 months in terms of his background. And I think he's only been away from that role for over a year or so, you know, I think he's a good candidate, I think I'm a good candidate, that's why I'm here. But, you know, he's also a very good candidate just to plug and play for a few months if that would be the case. So I don't want to take anything away from my credentials, but, you know, you have, you know, already a full agenda and who's going to best help you in, in the short term, up until someone's selected. So, whether it's me or someone else. But thank you for the question. Yeah.
Hi, Glenn.
Hey, Steven.
Madam President, you called me crazy for coming back to the board and you just called him a saint.
Touche.
My, my question is this, what is the one issue, obviously you're very well-versed with what's going on in the school district and some of the things we're dealing with, what is the one issue that we're dealing with now that the school district is that you're most passionate about? And that's a little different than Mr. McCucci's question.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm kind of splitting hairs here, but I'd like to hear your answer.
Sure. You know, I'm passionate, I have four children. So I am passionate to do whatever we can as a community to give the children a sense of normalcy. I know we're doing our best following guidelines by the state, but we're seeing a lot, we've been over this, you know, for, homebound for over a year. I'm happy that I was able to come in without a mask. I was told beforehand that I would have to wear a mask and I kindly requested not to wear a mask because I was fully vaccinated. Another candidate decided because he wasn't vaccinated not to show up here and he left because he's very upset, you know? But I feel like as a society, you know, we got to be, make common sense decisions. Let science, we have good science. I come from a science background, I can appreciate what we did as a community. I think what you did with taking those children, bringing them back to school as soon as you could is phenomenal. But I'm passionate to do whatever I can to help our community return back to normal.
You knew what you were getting yourself into, Steve, that's the difference. You knew, okay? That's why you were crazy. There's not enough time. I don't have any questions, you want to, Mr. Kern?
Sure. Is it a little bit like the first time you jump out of an airplane is not bad? It's the second time.
You know, right.
Yeah, but the second time you did it, yeah. Anyway, Glenn, what impact would you like to make as a board member?
My, my background and skills, I appreciate that question, John. I would like to somehow, with my skill sets and working with multiple stakeholders and multiple personalities, help bring the board to more cohesive decisions. I think there's a lot of discussions, lengthy discussions that go on here. And if we can come to resolution in a shorter timeframe, you know, I think that would help the board move matters ahead and not dwell into so many details. I know there's a lot of big items on our agenda, but I think that my skill set and, and I did that during the redistricting committee, I saw lots of... skill set, and I did that during the redistricting committee, I saw lots of personalities, and I would try to draw them and focus them on the matters at hand that we needed to focus on. So I think that's helpful. Yeah. Thank you.
Glenn, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. I actually have a question, too, that I just thought of. What's something that, when you look back at the last year-ish or so, in the things that we've done, what's something that you think you would have done different, or that you think, you know, maybe they got it wrong?
It's tough. I mean, you know, maybe they got it wrong. I wouldn't say you got it wrong. I think you did the best you could, given the circumstances. You know, I think what you've done up until this day has been challenging. You went through a lot of curveballs. I can't say, you know, honestly, that you did anything 100% wrong. You know, I know parents maybe up here at times commenting, but you had to weather the storm. You weathered the storm, you know? You were trying to get out of the storm. So I think, you know, that's, once again, my hats off to how well you guys did. You know, in terms of planning and budgeting, if there's a way, I know these are big decisions, big agendas, and a lot of moving parts. If, you know, it's going to be this much expenditure, anything you can do to get ahead of it sooner than later. I think the redistricting committee felt that we didn't have enough time. We may, you know, even though we had so much time, we could use more time. It's a big decision. So if you guys can give yourself more time, I know you're dealing with a lot, but that would be one recommendation. There's not enough time sometimes. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sentiment's correct. There is not enough time sometimes. So, important question, one end or two?
Two ends.
Thank you. And then my real question.
I'm done.
If you could just bring one thing to the district, or like, do one thing, or make one unilateral decision, one change, what would it be?
One unilateral change. That's a big question. I like that question, though. I think one of the comments that were made during the redistricting committee is that the committee wanted to invest our budget, our funds, for the students and the teachers. I think, you know, if I were to come in, I think, you know, focusing on that, I know we have a lot of focus on buildings, but there should be a lot more focus on programs and the students and the teachers. I think the teachers, you renewed the contract. That was great. You know, I think we have a great community of teachers. You know, I think they're phenomenal. But I think if, you know, instead of focusing so much on the infrastructure and focus more on the programs, that's going to help in the long run. Yeah.
So I guess I'll ask the same question. What have you done to prepare, I guess, knowing back a few months ago that you were going to be running for this seat? What have you done to prepare for the possibility of winning the election and the possibility now of filling this vacancy? So, you know, specific to getting familiar with how we've been doing things and...
Thank you for the question, Chris. I think the redistricting committee was a good test. I can't say that I had to make the same decisions that you make here, which are more significant. But working with the public, how they commented frequently in addressing their comments collectively, coming to a vote, a consensus on what we need to evaluate as a committee, some of the decisions similar, you collectively have to make a decision. You know, I think it's preparing myself. I recently attended the workshop for school candidates. So that was a four-hour course. So I trained myself on what to expect, and that was taught by a very good instructor out of Harrisburg. But he sort of was very in tune with what's going on with the legislation, the state fundings that you have to deal with, the limited fundings, you know, waiting for funding, paying into a pension system, which is crazy, the amount of money you have to commit to it. So that's how I prepare myself. I've been through the redistricting committee, going to the state websites, you know, preparing myself as a candidate. And throughout the last few months, working, you know, fortunately, everything's video recorded, so I can go through all the webinars. So late at night, my wife always goes down and says, "What are you doing?" "I'm watching the school board meetings." You know? So I'm preparing myself. Yeah. Yeah.
Trust me, it doesn't. I still, I watch other schools' school board meetings, so...
You're a crazy person.
Thank you for answering that, though.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much again. We appreciate your application. We're going to move on to our next candidate, and we'll be voting shortly.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Diliberto, what do you know?
Hello, everybody.
He does look familiar. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I'll tell you what I told Steve. Are you crazy?
Yeah, you know, just kind of see what I can do to help out.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate it. We, anyone that I said, like I said earlier, anyone who applies for this, especially you, knowing what you are getting yourself into,
Yeah.
is commendable. And so just give us a few minutes, you've been through this process already, about why you feel like you're the best candidate. We'll take a few minutes to ask you some questions.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the unique opportunity tonight. As I got ready for today, reading and watching the videos of previous meetings, two things came to mind, and they were resilience and perspective. This is an amazing community, able to walk together and figure things out, even when change has been constant and direction's been uncertain. Our community's found a way, even when things were tough. People reached out. People had shoulders to lean on. Just know, if there was things that were getting tough, there was people around you that cared. And then the other piece that came out to me was perspective. So when I sat in your seats and you had information presented, it was digested differently than when I sat as a parent and watched everything that you guys went through. It seemed like every meeting, there was something different going on. And as a parent, you're questioning and taking a leap of faith to say, you know, is this the right thing? Is this what's best for everyone? And there's really no way to know that, because this has never happened before. And personally, I'm grateful for the opportunities that both my kids have. Being in school five days a week has really made a huge difference for them and for us. I'm not a good teacher. The spring was crazy. And I'm glad that they had the opportunity to go back. And the community's been great to me and my family. And I thought this could be a way to give back one more time. There's a lot of different items that are being discussed. What's going to happen with QE, the baseball field, the budget's right around the corner, and, you know, full-day kindergarten. So I'd like to use my experience of what I've had when I served for those 18 months and offer it to the board. If you think I'd be a good fit for what you guys are looking for, I'd be more than happy to serve out the few months that are left on Ms. Weed's term.
Okay. Thank you so much. And Keith, I'll start with you, and we'll just have questions around.
Rob.
Hey, Keith.
Good evening, man. How are you?
Doing well, thanks.
Good. Hey, thanks for throwing your hat back in the, you know, back in the rink. We appreciate it. So my question has been the same to all the other candidates. So the most pressing issue you think the school district is dealing with at the present time?
The most pressing issue right now that the school district is dealing with? I think there's a couple of things on the table, and it's really going to be a decision of what direction the board wants to go with the three major spends that are out there, and how that will impact the budget today and into the future. You know, what the redistricting committee did an excellent job of finding what's best for the students. And they determined that QE should be open and stay open. And now, as a board, we have to figure out how to make that happen. And then there's the baseball field. Having a team only be able to play five home games out of a possible 20, is there a way to help them with that? And then, you know, what would the overall impact be of full-day K? So all those different things, you kind of have to prioritize and understand. And you guys had the benefit of living with that, gradually learning about it, and building your knowledge base over the course of the year. So although I've watched the meetings, and the YouTube channel's been great, being able to watch things over and over again, to kind of get a understanding of what's going on, I would really lean heavily on you guys to kind of understand what each of your perspectives are, and kind of work to my conclusion from there. Because there's a lot of different options for each point, and trying to understand what would be the best option now and into the future.
Thanks, Rob.
Sure. Thanks, Keith.
My standard question is not applicable here, so I will simply say, it's good to see you again, Rob.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Jackson.
Well, Rob, I guess I'm not the only crazy person that left the board that wants to come back again. Okay? Having done what you're attempting to do, I would say to you, and let me also say that when you were on the board working with you, I found you to be a very thoughtful, insightful person. You didn't speak a lot, but you listened a lot. But there must be one singular reason why you wanted to come back. I mean, something that's really important to you, or that maybe you're passionate about. Is there? And if there is, what is it?
Yeah. Thanks for that question. It's not any one thing. Like I said, having our experiences that we had in Quakertown, I'd like to try and give back. You have a lot of things that have to happen in a very, very short period of time. And I remember ramping up last time, and I felt like, you know, drinking from a fire hose. So if that experience helps at all, I'd like to offer it out to you guys.
I'll ask my standard question. Rob, hi.
Hi, John.
We might get drinks on proper now. I'm just looking at the time. What impact would you like to make as a board member?
As far as an impact, I just want to kind of bring my experience back to the board and understand what's going on in the community, and see if there's a way I can help.
Hi, Rob. Welcome back.
Hi, John.
I got to say that after this last year, I agree with you, teaching is hard. And I found out that I probably would fail second-grade math if I had to take it over again. But my question really is, you know, looking back at this year, you know, we've made a lot of decisions, and we've had a lot of arguments. What's one of the things that you would look back and say, you know what, maybe we should have done this different, or we could have done this different? And what would your kind of take on that have been?
I don't know about different, but like, the one reaction that kind of stands out. And when I was going through everything, and, you know, you guys keep saying, like, am I crazy? But it felt like I was kind of going up that first hill of the roller coaster, like, it was like clatter and clatter and clatter, and you knew it's going to go fast. But the thing that stood out to me when I was going back through everything was that first meeting that you had when the administration presented the plan to you guys. And it seemed like there's a lot of care and thoughtfulness that went into it. And then you guys had the ability to say, hey, let's go back and take another look at it. And as a parent, I'm like, why? Like, why not put that plan in place since so much work went into it? Because time is like the one resource you can't get back. And if you had that plan in place, maybe when it's in action, you could tweak it. But I wouldn't want to be in your seat for the past year. Like, the stuff that you guys did, all I can say is thank you very much. Just the amount of information that you had to go through, there's a great mix of personalities on the board, and you guys were able to come together and make it work. I wouldn't want to be in that seat for that past year. So, thank you.
Can I just follow up? And I normally not asking questions. Are you saying that you would not have wanted the kids to go back to school so quickly?
No. I would have wanted that plan to get put in place when it was originally presented, because I felt like, once it's in place, then we can kind of figure out the other pieces from there versus waiting, it was a couple of weeks, I think. And it was a very, I think, similar plan. But that was the only thing that really came to mind of, could that have been done differently? But I think the end result of getting the kids back in school has made a world of difference to our two boys, and to me, in general. And just, you know, every situation is different. And I felt like this year, there is no wrong answer, right? It's just, you have really nothing to base it on. It's just like, here's what my gut feeling is telling me. And then is there a majority on it? And you guys are a team. And when that final vote is complete, then you guys move forward and go on to the next piece.
Just understood what you just said was, when we voted to come back in December, you were like, well, why'd you say wait till December? Is that what you're saying? Because when we voted, it was like in October or something, to go back in December.
No, it was like, it was like in the summer, that summer plan
Oh, okay.
of how to, like, get things going.
All right. Rob, one unilateral decision to make one change or do one thing, what would it be?
Make one change in the district?
Yes, district-focused. Yes. World peace. Not going to happen today. District-focused.
That's a crazy question. There's not one thing that really pops out to my head. I mean, I can be honest, I'm drawing a blank, as far as, I just think there's just so many little things that add up. And I can't imagine one thing that's going to make a massive difference from that perspective. I can't pick one, sorry. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Good to see you, by the way.
Hey, Chris.
I really can't ask you the same question I asked everybody else. Doesn't really apply here. So I'll ask you slightly down the same road. So where did you now find the time that you didn't have two years, or a year and a half ago, when you decided not to run?
I think that the difference was, I wanted to focus on getting ice hockey up and off the ground. And having never done that before, I don't think I could have done both, or done both well. It was a crazy experience. We were really lucky with the folks that we had here in Quakertown to help get that started. And the families have been great with that. As far as finding time, that lift is done. I'm still actively involved with it as the president. But I think there's more balance from that perspective with time.
Okay. And I will let you know, there is land available for an ice rink over there, but I don't believe there's budget available, so.
Well, yeah. So I'll put a plug in there. If there's, if there's any millionaires out there that would like to build an ice hockey rink in Quakertown, Chris has land available.
I'm saying the district land.
The district has land available, so talk to Dr. Harner.
So why wasn't that your unilateral decision, that you would build the ice hockey rink?
Because it doesn't really impact education. So, but to that point, so if anybody out there is listening, has somebody who's interested, K through 12, we have an ice hockey program.
All right, Sarah, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
We're going to go ahead and move on to the next step in the process.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Good to see you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you again, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Guy, for bearing with us as we are taking a little bit more time than we budgeted with you. Okay. So at this point, just to reiterate the process of what we're going to do here, and if you want to... Okay. So once we have nomination, are we, I believe we came to the determination that we're going to do, you're going to vote for one person? Okay. So at this time, we'll take nominations.
I'd like to nominate Rob Diliberto.
Second.
So there's, I thought there was five candidates, though.
No, there's only three now.
There's only two.
Two of them.
They didn't want to do this. That doesn't mean that they're not officially... Great, I'm saying, but for the sake of the public, and everybody sitting here, we should at least mention those people's names.
Okay.
Please?
Do you know?
They don't have to be here to answer these questions, to be selected, and they deserve.
The other candidate was Malcolm Vinger. And Dana Krajewski. I'm so sorry if I butchered that. She actually said she wanted to withdraw her nomination, though. So, Wazinski? So she's withdrawn, yes. So I'll take other nominations at this point.
I'd like to nominate Jen...
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Gross. I'll second.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Glenn Iosu.
We have a second for that. All right, we have two nominations on the table and we're going to do a roll call vote. And this time, you're going to state the name of the candidate that you would like to vote for. And in order for that person to move forward, we need five votes. So, Sarah, if you'd like to go ahead. And just to be clear, the two candidates, we have Jennifer Gross and we also have Rob DeLaBerto.
Jennifer Gross.
Chris Spear. Mr. Spear.
Jennifer Gross.
Rock Monowitz.
Jen Gross.
Mr. Kern.
Mr. DeLaBerto.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Jennifer Gross.
Mr. McCucci.
You can't abstain.
I know, they're both, there's, there's, they're both really great candidates, I could take either or. Both?
They are both, they both do well.
Jen Gross.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. DeLaBerto.
And Mr. Klein.
Rob DeLaBerto.
Do we have five for Jennifer Gross?
Yes.
Okay, so congratulations to Jennifer Gross, who just received the five votes necessary to serve out the rest of the duration of Jennifer Wheat's candidacy. And at this time, Judge Guyer is here and she is going to swear in Mrs. Gross. Or Jen, you don't have anyone here. I'm going to stand next to you.
Oh, that's right. Most of us had our children in here, should we quick? Just call your daughter, get her.
I state your name.
I, Jennifer Gross.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I hope you didn't have plans for the rest of the evening, Jen, you're supposed to stay here and. You can come over here, you get the official invite to sit in Jenny Wheat's seat. Don't have to, only change your last name.
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. So you're just going to press that little button?
Thank you, Judge.
And you want, if you're not talking, just keep going because it's.
Congratulations.
We are taking a break? Take a break? Okay, I just wanted to let people who are listening to us from Zoom, we're going to take a one to two minute break. Please.
Okay, now Jen, any questions you have now. We'll answer them all.
Here you are.
Do you turn the recording off for this or do you need it?
No, it's fine. It's fine.
Once you stop, we can start. All right. So did you have time to text your husband yet?
No, I didn't.
Is your daughter still talking to you?
No, she's not.
Do you know what you got yourself into? I need a copy of this, too. Okay, all right, Jen.
Yes. Do you have, do you have a water?
Dr. Horner brought me one, he was nice to me.
Jen, you changed your number in the last four years?
No, it's the same.
Hi, I'm Nancy Edwards, Jen, nice to meet you.
I wonder if Joe has an email for you that he can give me? Because I can't put in board dot.
It was all the extra training they got.
All the extra training?
It was all the extra training you did.
That's a good thing.
Thank you. Want to even just give me your.
Do you want to just take mine?
Your home email until they give you a. Okay, so go ahead.
Gross, G R O S S.
How would you like the fire hose delivered to you?
I told her, I said, what were you thinking?
She sat through the company, had to plan at half the meeting the other night. Yeah, I saw you out there on the cheap seats.
I was in the cheap seats, but then I had, I moved over to the other training, one with the.
Oh, good for you. Yeah, yeah, I know.
You would send me a invitation for it, yeah, yeah.
Well, I wanted to make sure whoever got the, the election in the spring, this seat, whoever wins the primary in, in the fall is ready to go. So I'm grateful that you took advantage.
Thank you.
Okay, so Gross.
Gross, one, two, zero, four.
Two, zero, four.
At Comcast.net.
Okay, and then once you get your official Quakertown email, Joe will probably have it for you tomorrow. And I have the laptop, so let's see.
Sorry, if I get on, I'm going to tell Mrs. Angela that I will not show up in my jeans. Like she forced me to do it every morning.
Okay, thank you all for your patience as we took a momentary break there. Again, congratulations, I want to give my, my congratulations to Jennifer Gross, who is now a part of the team of ten, nine board members and Dr. Horner here. So, so welcome. And now you're going to be, get, you know, baptized by fire through our agenda tonight as you're going to take place, take a part in our voting, so. So, congratulations. I'm going to move on to our agenda. Let's see here, we're going to move on to the approval of our minutes. So I will need a motion to approve the minutes from April 29th meeting.
So moved. Chris Spear.
I'll second. Mr. Reimers.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right, we're going to have our first reading of the general public comment.
And can you hear me?
She is going to read them.
Can you hear me, Ms. Mitchell?
She said she had four.
Can, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, thank you. The first comment is from Kristen Carper from Richland Township. Why has the district decided to cancel Spanish for all elementary schools starting next year? This decision has been made without any input from the staff or the families in the district. At least send a survey out to the elementary families to get feedback and see what response you receive. The next comment is from Robin Liverman of Quakertown Borough, parent of third grader and kindergartner. What is the plan moving forward for September regarding the mask mandate? Do the case numbers in our area even support such a mandate? Will the board work with the parents to unmask our children? The next comment is from Anita Boyer of Quakertown Borough. It is my understanding that QCSD is looking to fill an instrumental music position with a teacher who is a split, who is to split a band and strings position. As a music educator of 27 years, it has been my experience that the type of unicorn who can service both programs to a level of distinct distinction rarely exists. I understand that as music educators, we hold a K-12 cert to teach band, orchestra, and chorus. However, we were all trained in and specialized in a particular forte. I personally saw the decline of a string program when a band director was hired to teach strings for three years. Students were not prepared for a middle level orchestra and students struggled to catch up during that time. In fact, many of them quit due to the struggles. The same would hold true if the roles were reversed and a string teacher were expected to run the first class, to run a first class band program. Based on my experience, I strongly urge you to reconsider this decision and dedicate one person to inspiring the string students and one to the band students. And the final comment is from Megan McClasky of Quakertown Borough. First, I would like to thank the school board, administration, teachers, and nurses for everything you are doing for our children. The end of the school year is quickly approaching and I'm sure you're counting down the days, just like the kids. In a little over a month, my daughter and the senior class will be graduating. Quakertown Senior High School. In this time, there are many milestones ahead of them, college signings, prom, and graduation, just to name a few. With the CDC, Governor Wolf, and the Board of Health easing up on restrictions, I am asking the board and administration to allow parents at college signings and outside guests at prom. Many school, many area schools are allowing for this. Many school, many area schools are allowing for this for their students. I think it's time we took look into for ours. Thank you for your attention to these matters. And that is the end of public comment.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the next item of our agenda, which is our superintendent report, Dr. Horner.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and welcome back, everybody, to Quakertown Community School District. It's great to see you all. It's been, for most of you, over a year in person. But countless days, hours, midnights that we've shared via Zoom. The first up, I'm moving forward, moving it up in the agenda. And Ms. Edwards has been the leader of the comprehensive planning strategies and requirements that's dictated by the Department of Education, Pennsylvania Department of Education, since I think your first plan was 2003 that you led the committee on. And she is leading that along with her partner, Dr. Hoffman, the comprehensive plan. So tonight, you all received the presentation that was given to the steering committee last week.
Good evening. Actually, Joanne Parati is here via Zoom because we have a combination presentation from people in the room and people on Zoom this evening due to the number of presenters. So Joanne is going to start us off. We did a run-through with the steering committee last week to get additional feedback and it went very well. So hopefully, you will all find this illuminating and also efficient in the, in the use of your time because it is a lot of information. Okay, Joanne?
Okay, thank you very much. Can you pull up the PowerPoint so I, why be able to see it as I'm on Zoom? That's.
Yeah, we're working on that now.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Jo. I appreciate it. Okay, so as we develop the comprehensive plan, it is a requirement with the Department of Education. And not only is it important for the Department of Education, but most importantly, it's a very important for the Quakertown Community School District. So as we start the process, the first thing that we have to do is look at our mission statement. And everything that we do in the Quakertown Community School District is driven by this powerful mission statement. This is not a generic mission statement by any means. Our mission is to prepare all students with the knowledge, habits, and skills they need to graduate, ready for college or career, and for engaged citizenship, all at the best value to our community. So everything that you're going to hear and see tonight is driven by this most powerful mission statement. So we started out with all those dreams and visions and great ideas we had for our students. And now, as we put together this plan, we have to build that bridge and we have to turn it into operations, actions, and doing. So that, that has really been almost over a year process, working with your superintendent, working with your leadership team, and also working with all the stakeholders throughout the community of Quakertown. One of the requirements of the Department of Education is the way they have it organized is ready, set, go. So we started out with the ready, the preparing for planning. We looked at the web tool, we looked at the profile, all the plan essentials. We had a great steering team, you'll see that in a minute, that it just involved our parents, our board members, our students, business, industry, community, staff, administrators, and also your superintendent. We looked at the profile of our district. I always look at that as that real estate narrative, why someone would want to move to the Quakertown Community School District, and why would they want their child to be enrolled in your district? We looked at our mission, our vision, and our educational values. From there, we did the ready and then we went to the set. And we worked with your superintendent and your leadership team on completing a needs assessment. We're actually in the process of finalizing that now. The Department of Education wants us to look at the future-ready P.A. index, look at the strengths and challenges in the district, look at our academics, our English language arts, our mathematics, our STEM area. We want to look at that career readiness, the students, what is their career path, and then all the equity considerations. So you can see that the Department of Ed does require a lot of work for the district to get ready with the set piece. And then the final piece is the go. And this is the goal setting that you're going to hear about tonight. It's building that bridge to the other side where we had the dreams and visions for our students, and now we're going to turn it into action-oriented plans, evidence-based strategies, action plan steps, looking at our staff, what professional development do we have for them? How are we going to communicate this plan to our community? And then the final piece is submitting the plan, not only to our community, but to the Department of Education. The, the Pennsylvania Department of Education has core foundations that we have to look out, look at. How do we do things? What are our standards? The curriculum, instruction, assessment? How safe and supportive are our schools? What materials and resources do our staff have? What professional ed development do we have for them? And how do we take care of our students in the special ed field? Then we look at where we've been, where we are now, and then where do we want to go? So it's important when you develop this plan is that we, we not only look forward, we look where we have been, where we are now, and then where we're going to go. So this is the timeline and the part that's highlighted, which just last week, we presented to the steering team. Tonight, we're presenting this to the board as an informational item. But if you backpack, backpack all the way till January 20th, 2020, that's when we initially started this process. So a lot of time has gone by, a lot of time and effort has gone into the process. Then we'll be presenting it to you tonight as an informational item. Then a requirement from the Department of Education is to have it on public display on your website for 28 days. And then on June 10th, we'll have it approved by the board. We'll look at the completion of the work that we have to do in the web tool. And then the last day that we have to submit it to the Department of Education is November 30th. As I mentioned earlier, this has got to make everyone there tonight in person, as a, as a board member and people that are watching this on Zoom, look at the amount of steering committee members that were involved in the development of this plan. And as the facilitator of the process, this makes me so proud that it just wasn't one or two people developing the plan. But like I said earlier, you had such a great group of stakeholders involved in the development of this plan that we're presenting tonight. So when you look at the board and steering committee input, these are the areas that they felt were really important. And we took these areas and then developed it into our comprehensive plan. So I'll take a minute, just for a few seconds, and have you really kind of absorb everything that's on this slide and how important it is to every child that walks through every door of every school in the Quakertown Community School District. And then we can go to our next slide. And so as we develop this comprehensive plan, we had our focus, our simplicity, the connection, and the continuation of our plan. And so we took what we've developed in the past, we looked at what we accomplished, we looked at what we needed to do going forward. And so we ended up with the two main areas that are our focus areas, and that is student success and financial sustainability. So Nancy, do we want to turn it over to the groups then to start doing their presentations?
Yeah, I just have a comment or two and then, then we will do that. Before we turn that over to them, if you pay attention to those words, focus, simplicity, connection, and continuation, they will help you see the themes that extend throughout all the different areas of the plan. So the idea was not to do millions of new things, but to continue to invest in the things that we have in progress that are working well, that we want to keep improving. We want to be focused because coming out of the pandemic, it's, it's difficult to sustain focus. And so if there's too much going on, I think that would undermine our success. So focus was important in terms of how the action teams approach their work. You will see throughout a lot of connections in the pieces, and there's a graphic at the end of the presentation that tries to bring some of that together. But as you listen to the different action planning team leaders talk about their area, you will hear connections to other areas and how work overlaps again so that we, we have a sustained focus. So this slide and the next slide are simply a summary of the action plan areas that have been developed out based on the, the feedback that we initially got from the board and from the steering committee. And we have had an excellent group of district leaders that have worked on developing the specifics in each area. And so each of the groups is going to talk a little bit, give you their elevator speech version of, of all of the work that they did. If you click on some of the links in the presentation, you will get an idea of the depth and the detail of the work. But for tonight, you know, elevator speech is our, our kind of mantra. Okay, so, so with that, I would turn it over to our, our first group, which is Culture for Learning.
Great, thank you, Ms. Edwards. My name's Kelly Kramer. I am an instructional coach for the K-12 here. And we didn't quite review how we're going to signal next slide, so I'm not sure. There we go, maybe beep, we can just continue with that from our, our meeting last week. Our goal, the SEL goal and our PBIS goal falls under the umbrella of mental health and wellness. Beep. Thank you. Wellness refers to the capacity to cope with demands across time, circumstance, and setting. To ensure student and staff well-being, the implementation of positive behavior intervention supports, or PBIS, and SEL, or social and emotional learning frameworks, are essential to student growth and achievement.
Hi, I'm Janet Pallone. I'm the Director of Pupil Services here in Quakertown. And SEL is the process through which students and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills which are necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and ultimately make responsible decisions.
So when you school-wide, PBIS can change the focus of discipline from reactionary punitive measures to a preventative, positive interactions between students and staff. These positive interactions help students develop social and emotional competencies, which is the ultimate goal of SEL. Therefore, a stronger relationship between students and teachers creates a better learning environment for all.
Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, or PBIS, is a multi-tiered framework focused on prevention and instruction. Each school must identify the behavior expectations that they want to develop among their students. Ideally, this is a short list of three to five behaviors that they want to focus on. As the school identifies these core values, it also decides how those values might look in a variety of settings. For example, showing respect might mean that a student raises their hand in the classroom, follows rules on the playground, and uses table manners in the cafeteria.
Great, thank you, Janet. We are excited about our goal. We've developed strategic steps and have identified processes in which PBIS and SEL will be integrated across academic areas. Some of our action items include, but are certainly not limited to, conducting a needs assessment, researching and reviewing our current resources, and planning professional development opportunities for our staff. Next slide, please. Here you can see on our slide, there's a link to our goal document, some data that we used to develop, or help develop our goals in our goal statement, and then a brief overview of the why. Our next, and with that, I guess, our next group coming up is. Dr. Hoffman and Nancy Ann. And Dr. Hoffman and Ms. Edwards, thank you.
Okay, I can pick up from here. So our next area in Culture for Learning has to do with extending our idea of building autonomy, which we've had in the district for quite a few years. Some of you may also know it as site-based management or something similar where the idea is that the, the buildings are given the autonomy to make choices that best serve the students in the building. And certainly, that gets a lot of support from the leadership team here. But we're really trying to find a way to help them to grow some ideas that they have in their buildings as building leadership teams to be able to, to, to work within what they're given, to make something magical in their buildings. So as you can see here, our elevator speech is that action research is an effective way to unleash the creativity and innovation of teachers in classrooms and principals in their buildings. If building leadership teams have the autonomy to utilize action research to target a specific improvement area, then we will be able to generate the energy and knowledge needed to support best practices, to determine what works, and to collaborate, to share what works across the district. They will own it together. And so the work that, that Nancy and I have done in this area really is around taking the time to let teachers and principals know what works best in their building, right? So to give them the chance to use action research to actually think through something that they may like to change or do differently in their building, to survey, to do research, to actually implement it in their building. And then hopefully, we can learn from that. And if it works for other buildings, we can pass it on. And if it doesn't work, it's kind of a safe way to try this because it's, you know, they would know early on, maybe this isn't getting the result they want and they want to change it. So we'll be working with them to learn more about the action research process. Many of our principals and building leadership team members are already familiar. Some of them may have done thesis work or doctoral work, but we're going to really work with them on action research in education in the classroom to, to do exactly what's written here in, in the why and give them a chance to work collaboratively together to solve a problem in their own building while also professionally developing them to learn more about action research. So we are also very excited about this work. It's wonderful when we have a continuation of something that we've had as a goal. And rather than trying to start something new, we're now taking it kind of like to the next level and giving them an opportunity to really start processing through some changes that they may like to see in their building, but maybe they don't know where to start. So we'll be doing professional development with them to, to talk them through that.
Good evening. My name is Zach Garger. I am a K through 12 instructional coach, just like Kelly. And I work in the Office for Teaching and Learning. My partner in this process was Greg Lesher, who is the Assistant Principal at Strayer Middle School, and he's unable to attend tonight, so I will be presenting both of our parts. Through our collaborative process, Greg and I started diving into. the quality instruction aspect of the comprehensive plan. And at first, we started with six goals, and we whittled our way down to two that kind of combined some ideas from all those different brainstorming sessions that we had. So our first goal is the the a goal focusing on a data-driven culture. And in a data-driven district, QCSD commits to implementing a system that analyzes actionable data at regular intervals across all content areas and has also made progress in using Linkit as a way to analyze data. So this goal, again, as you've heard, another of the goals presented is not new to us, but we're looking to build our culture of data and how we look at data by leveraging our system that is Linkit. And we use Linkit, it's a fantastic system for for grabbing tons of different data pieces and being able to share with parents and share with students, but also to work with our teachers to look at the data. And we were really good at looking at our benchmarks and talking about our common assessments, but we're looking to to look to new ways of how we can leverage this platform to build common assessments in there, to analyze the data in there, triangulate that data, have conversations about that data, and then use that data to plan instruction for all students. And what that means then is going to turn into better instruction and more learning for our students. So again, this is not a goal that is new. It's taking a deeper dive into the system that we already have in place and thinking of new ways that we can use it. And the goal here then, perfect, on the next slide, is is to bring our data back to pre-pandemic numbers. And from there, continuing to work through the the data conversation process and the data meeting process and the planning process to to see achievement in academic growth from each year forward from there. Next slide, please. Our second area of focus is within tiered instruction differentiation. So in the public school system, you know, you often hear about the whole child. And in QCSD, we want to ensure that each child in every school throughout the community is healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged. So how will we do that? So we will look to redefine our support systems and take a look at how we can intertwine academics with social emotional needs, with behavioral supports, and kind of have a three-tiered system around those three pieces of the triangle. Because again, when when the student is is achieving academically, they probably are achieving socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. So we want to look at all three of those pieces together. In doing so, we need to, you know, continue our curriculum cycle process, which over the past six years has focused on looking at tier one instruction. Tier one instruction is instruction that all students get. From there, we want to look to to utilize the next round of our curriculum cycle to dive into what do we do for our tier two students, our students who need a little bit more. And lastly, also look at our our tier three students who need a little bit more of a instead of a small group in tier two to a more one-on-one approach in tier three. But again, circling back to the goal is, you know, have that tier one instruction and and what we do in tier one in terms of academics, behavior, and social emotional needs, be meeting as many students as humanly possible. So in order to do this, you we're going to have to dive into some PD as a district. We're going to have to decide in our tiered system, we're going to have to build a vision. We're going to have to do some PD for our admins and PD for our teachers. We're going to get on the same page and then build out our district system from there. And and once we do that, we can then implement it. At the conclusion of this work, if you can go to the next slide, we want to see improvements in all of our academic metrics, all of our behavioral metrics, and all of our social emotional metrics. In addition, we want to see more students moving into that tier one so that, you know, the the majority of what we're teaching and doing is catching as many students as possible. And we also want to see more students moving out of tier three into tier two. And in the end, what that will do is is support, you know, catching more students earlier before there's a larger need and therefore less students moving into special education. So this goal, instruction, analyzing data, using data for planning, and then turning that planning into instruction that's impacting all of our students in the district in multiple facets. One, two, Carrie and Kim.
All right. Hello, Board, hello, community. I'm Carrie Stefiri. I'm the Supervisor of Special Education for grades K through six for Quakertown. So moving into our equity work and specifically talking about historically underperforming students, thank you. So really, kind of the lens that we're focusing all this on is the student experience. So when considering the student experience in QCSD, the student connection to the classroom and the relationships with those in their classes have a tremendous impact on academic growth. So like Zach said, when we see these tiered systems of instruction, when we focus on the student relationships through that SEL part and PBIS, we do believe that that can have an impact on student performance. Because by building those relationships with students of all backgrounds, we can create a community of learners where students feel safe, comfortable, supported, and encouraged. So we do want to focus on students that come from a variety of backgrounds or a variety of ways that they identify in the world. Through differentiation, our teachers can challenge students when needed, support them to meet their potential, and expand their background knowledge to keep students engaged in learning. So we do want this academic growth part to be focused on that student engagement because we do feel like that is really a gateway to students, like it says here, meeting their full potential. Finally, by elevating diverse perspectives, students will see themselves reflected in the curriculum and in the opportunity school provides, which we believe gives them the confidence to grow academically. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see that part of our action planning here is focusing on our PSSA and Keystone data. And so we will be looking at either percent of proficiency on those assessments or at least just closing the gap that we see for some of our historically underperforming students. And then Kim is going to talk more about our work in terms of broader equity.
I'm Kim Finerty, and I'm an Assistant Principal at Quakertown Community High School. I have also served in five other buildings, K through 12. Started at Trum, went to Richland High School, Kiwi, Strayer, back at the high school. So I'd like to think I'm a good person for this equity goal. But I actually thought, maybe it's because I've lived in eight states, traveled to 49, lived in a Muslim nation, and have currently have five family members living in foreign countries, that I'm the person to talk about equity and diversity. I totally embrace it. And I think that when we do as a district, we are going to foster resilience, flexibility, creativity, open-mindedness in our students who will hopefully leave here as critical thinkers and prepared to, you know, live happily and work collaboratively in a globally diverse world. And I can't think of any more important goal for our kids. We're going to continue our commitment to trauma-informed instruction and restorative practices, but we are going to really increase the emphasis on the importance of building and maintaining strong student-teacher relationships and a sense of belonging for every student in every classroom. But we want to expand our PD choices and leadership opportunities for staff. We want to develop a common language and increase our understanding of diverse perspectives. We want to launch programs to increase participation and leadership opportunities for all students. Students from diverse backgrounds need to be involved in those activities, arts, academics, athletics. And we want to identify areas to increase student voice. When equity is infused in our culture, you know, we really believe that everyone benefits. Our students, our staff, our parents, our community. When people feel valued and respected, they will feel pride in being part of Quakertown Community School District. I really love this slide that I'm not sure how well you can see that. But I I'm a big believer in this quote, that diversity drives innovation. So when we limit who can contribute or who can come to the table, we limit the problems we can solve. And that's not what we want to do, and that's not who we want to be. So I'm really excited about this goal and looking forward to working on it in the in the coming years. We will be looking at, as you can see, the measurable goal statement is to to elevate diverse perspectives and increase opportunities for involvement, as I just mentioned, in initiating programs and partnerships to promote that equitable access and support, working with other agencies and businesses in the community to do that. And we also want to use panorama data because we are going to focus in on increasing students reporting a sense of belonging and comfort and safety in their classrooms. And we also want to increase our numbers in student-teacher relationships. And we want to establish some goals for cultural awareness and action, which we'll be working on in the coming year. So at this point, I'll hand it off to my colleagues, Jen and Jason.
Thank you, Kim. My name is Jason Magnitch. I'm one of the House Principals here at Quakertown Community High School. I'm sharing this responsibility tonight with Mrs. Corolla. We're going to be sharing about the College and Career Readiness, our Pathways Program that we're setting up through the district K to 12. So again, we're excited this year, the area of focus, because much of what you see and hear tonight ties together with the priorities previously discussed. Our plan seeks to deliver a cohesive and comprehensive career readiness framework district-wide that will focus on engaging learners at every level through utilizing active inquiry, problem-based learning, authentic real-world experiences, and a rigorous academic programming aligned to the ever-changing workforce trends. Our overall goal is to build a culture within the district that is meaningful, motivating, and makes students more marketable. Emphasis will be placed on representing, encouraging, and celebrating all post-secondary paths and diversity of the individuals in those career fields. Shifts in the instructional practices that highlight the relevance of academic content and apply the learned academic skills in the context of real-world situations will make learning more meaningful for our students.
And we're excited about this opportunity to build strong partnerships with industry professionals. And those partnerships will benefit not only our students, but also our faculty in increasing learning opportunities for them. We also hope to have opportunities to place our students directly out into the community in field study experiences. And ultimately, an end goal would be to provide a potential pipeline of future skilled employees right back into our our own community here in Quakertown. We feel and we hope that through developing greater self-awareness in students of helping them to identify their interests and their areas of ability, that they'll be able to connect more so with the learning in the classroom, and they'll be able to connect what the present is in the classroom with what their future career goals are. And that will motivate them to be more even more successful. As we talked about in many of the other, in many of their slides, we already have the foundation. So we have the rigor, we have the relevance, we have the relationships here in Quakertown. And now we're just going to increase the readiness factor. So K to 12, we want to further develop industry and interpersonal skills within our students, and we'll do so with a more intentional delivery of these authentic learning experience for them.
In the end, our students will graduate from Quakertown Community School District more confident in their skills and having acquired the competencies that reflect a well-rounded and more marketable individual, poised for a career and life success regardless of the path they choose.
And what you'll see in the next three slides, and I'll go through very quickly, our K to eight plan very closely mirrors our nine through 12 career pathways plan. We really thought long and hard about creating a cohesive and comprehensive plan. And this plan really targets three main areas. It targets in the instructional piece of things. It targets our our pathways, part of the partnerships. And then it also targets really a a consistent delivery of instruction across every curriculum and every building. And and all stakeholders have a have a part in delivering career readiness. We also hope in all of our work to really focus on, as Jason mentioned, representing, encouraging, and celebrating all post-secondary options, regardless of what students may choose to pursue, and showcasing that diversity of the professionals in all different career fields. And so the next two slides will mirror that. And if you have an opportunity, you could dig further into all the action step items we have in order to do that. I think with that, we can turn it over to the finance goal.
All right, thank you. For the benefit of those out there in Zoom, my name is Zach Shuck. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the School District. Although I'll be the spokesperson for this component, I just wanted to quickly highlight the rest of the operations team who did a lot of the work on the action planning and will be doing a lot of the work implementing the action plans. That's Lynn Routson, Lori Lexon, Barb Phillips, Rob Christine, and Joe Cuso, who are all part of the developing this. So financial sustainability, last but certainly not least, you know, how do we pay for it all? And although we're not what you would think of as a traditional bottom-line type of industry, the reality is that all of these goals rely on some sort of financial resources. And we do have a little picture there, you know, we we would love to have a money tree. Unfortunately, we don't have one. But we think we can accomplish similar things through being strategic and creative enough to to try to stretch our pennies into dollars. And the way we think we can do that is is I'll just read the little elevator speech here for you, is by focusing on the long-range financial forecasting and planning, audits of our systems to maximize efficiency and effectiveness, and make the investment in our employees' professional learning. We believe by doing this, we will be able to provide a solid and sustainable foundation to support our students' success and achievement of our mission. So what we did is we sort of broke this down into a few different categories. And and we believe these will have a positive return on investment, you know, for for our district and our community. So first, we need to make sure we're always conscious of how our decisions in the short term are going to impact us in the long term. And you'll hear some of that later when we talk about the budget. So the way we do this is is we want to make sure we're continuously putting together and presenting our long-range plan. And we want to make sure we're communicating that to all stakeholders. And this is something we've really tried to make a focus for our finance and facilities committees the last couple of years. And I think we've done a good job and we want to keep doing that. And and we really ought to make sure we're not operating and making decisions in in one-year silos. So then, second, we started to look at at the resources we currently have, and how do we ensure we're making the best use of them? So a couple of things that we we looked at here is, obviously, a lot of you have already heard about the the federal funds that we're expecting to receive over the the course of the next year, upwards of $5 million. We want to make sure we're continuously staying on top of our facilities, keeping them safe and functional for our for our students and our staff. And and we want to make sure we have proper purchasing at all levels, leveraging our purchasing power, and and look for opportunities to save without negatively impacting our our core, you know, focus and our and our core mission here. And then we want to make sure, you know, we're increasing the efficiency of our staffing and onboarding onboarding process. We want to make sure, you know, we we have a really robust process. Right now, we we use, our process is good, and it it sort of spans across multiple platforms. So we want to streamline that a little bit, make sure our staff are ready to go on day one. And if you think about every time, you know, the board makes a decision to to hire a staff member, you're you're making every single time a multimillion-dollar decision, if you think about it, if the person, you know, completes their their 30-year career with the school district. And then finally, we want to make sure we're investing in our staff. And and what we're looking and focusing on here is our support staff. You know, we think we do a really good job with with professional development, with our professional staff. But we think we've identified a need and somewhere we can improve, and that's with our support staff. Those are the individuals that are, you know, working directly with our students and our teachers every day. And we think that'll pay dividends in the long run. So so we've developed a couple of strategies around that to to be implemented over the next couple of years. So I know that was pretty quick. There's seven goals there in the end. And and if you wanted to take a look at any of them in more detail or the action plans, they're all linked in the presentation that that you have in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Just a few comments to connect it all together. And you can actually go to the next slide, Joe, where we tried to sort of represent the whole plan in a in a single page. And while, and and I have to credit Zach Garger for doing the designing the graphic. And while there's a tree in the background, which is a good graphic, I'd also almost put a spider web in there, maybe a big spider in the corner, but but put a spider web in there to really represent the interconnectedness between all of these parts. So as you can see, student success is at the center of everything that we're doing. Some of the things that are above student success are the things that students are working toward or that are that helping them do that, and the quality instruction and career planning. But an area that has renewed focus or additional focus, especially coming out of the year or so that we've had, is the ways that we're supporting our students in in achieving that success. So renewed focus on social and emotional learning and on equity in supporting historically underperforming groups of students. So renewed focus on social and emotional learning and on equity in supporting historically underperforming groups of students. So the top part where, you know, is what they're reaching for. And then all of that support is available to, to help them achieve success. And then the bedrock under the whole thing is the financial sustainability. Because obviously, if we can't afford to fund the things that we need for students to be successful, then that's going to make it more difficult for them to achieve success. So making sure that we're operating in a financially sustainable way is what's going to hold all of that up and make all of that possible. And at the center of all of it, as I said, is the support for the whole, for the whole child. I think you probably heard connections between the different pieces, between quality instruction and tiered supports and, and help for our historically underperforming students, between some of the academic growth work with some of those groups in the executive functioning areas and the social and emotional learning pieces. So they all tie together. So I would like to thank all of the people that developed the plan. We reached broadly to get as many perspectives as we could involve. So many people participate and you heard from many of them this evening. Our next steps, we've now presented it publicly to you. It is required to be reviewed by the public and available for 28 days. And then we would be bringing a motion for approval of the plan back to you in June. It does take considerable time to take all of the details in every one of those action plans and upload them into the comprehensive planning web tool. And Mrs. Prati is a tremendous help with her expertise in the latest iteration of the web tool. I don't know how many comprehensive plans I have done, maybe six. And it's probably four different web tools because every couple of years they change that model. So, so we will spend several months getting that all finished so that we're ready to formally hit the submit button by our deadline in November. So it's a lot to digest. So I'm sure the, the members would be happy to take any questions that you have now. If you don't have any right now, but some emerge as you review all the information that's been presented, we'd be happy to answer them at any time between now and June 10th or on June 10th when we bring it back to you for approval.
Thank you. I have two super quick ones for you. First one is they don't, you can't just import the PowerPoint presentation right into the tool. Just hit send and it's there.
If you, just for fun, because I know that you like to dig into things very deeply.
I did already.
If you go in and you look at the action plans and you look at every one of those boxes that's in the action plans, all of that information has to be transcribed into the web tool. So we cannot just.
A few of them, but it was a lot, yeah.
We can't just up, we can't even just upload the action plan document. We have to put it all in there. So.
Well, I had one more real one in the, for the standardized testing on, on slide 23. There was just one test that I have never heard of before, and it's probably an abbreviation to something I have heard of, but it was called F and P.
That is Fanta's and Penel, and it is a literacy assessment that we use with primary students, if I'm correct, right? Dr. Hoffman, there we go. I'm so happy I was able to answer that without help.
Great. Well, that's all my questions and thank you for that wonderful presentation.
I'd like to ask a question around the, many of the elements and the goals and things like that. I see what I would consider to be more activities and actions versus actual outcomes. So for example, you know, the effective tiered system, if we implement that, we'll get XYZ. I'm just wondering, do you have a sense of measuring progress in a different way other than activities? Like I saw, like the equity thing about more diversity yields innovation, but the goal says, only says get more diverse, not get more innovation, right? So do you understand?
Yeah, absolutely. But I think drilling down, you would find more of that information. So our measurement for many of the social and emotional learning components and the equity components come from the panorama student surveys. So we would be setting targets each year for improvement in particular areas of the student perception surveys that should reflect, like Mrs. Finerty had talked about, an increased sense of belonging. So one of the scales that's used in the panorama student survey, which we've done twice a year, I believe we have six years of existing data on student belonging. We would be setting targets for improvement in that area for each year of the plan. So each goal area does have a data set associated with it where we would be setting performance improvement targets each year. And then that would be, you know, what we would be reporting on in terms of our measurable progress in addition to all of the activities that need to happen in order to make that occur.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to have you rewrite that sort of thing. But that, to me, that's, that's the actual stuff you're looking for and it didn't come blaring out.
Correct. You'll see it in a kind of revised metric sheet that will show each goal, what the data measure is, what the target is. It's a similar like format to what you've seen before, but the things will be different because they'll match the, the plan. But for most things, there is a measurable, this is what we expect to see happen, the improvement in student experience as measured by this research based instrument.
Okay, thank you.
So along that lines, does it mean, so is, is the action plans then a living document that could change based on results that you find?
Yes.
In other words, you know, if, if you, you said expect to find, you know, we expect an outcome. If the outcome is not occurring, does that mean at that point you change course or something? And is it the same group that's working on this? Like I imagine it looked like you broke them into committees, kind of formulated the action plans. Will those same committees then be responsible for like overseeing it? Do they own it?
I think that the people involved are each very passionate about their area. And I am certain they will be deeply involved in how we execute it. For example, we were in an elementary principals meeting. Was that just yesterday? It seems like a very long time ago now. And Mr. Garger was in the, in the meeting and he was talking about certain things for tiered interventions and supports for students. And when he finished, I said, wow, you sound like someone who is really passionate about that topic because he was one of the people that developed the plan. So yes, a broad number of people will, will be working on it. And I think Mrs. Prati would tell you that comprehensive plans are no good if they become like a thing that sits on a shelf, that they're intended to be living, breathing documents. If we are doing something and not seeing the outcomes that we expect, we certainly wouldn't continue to do it for, you know, two more years just because it's in the plan, because you, you want to identify what works, you want to capitalize on that. If you find things that don't work, then by all means, we, we want to stop doing them. So, so yeah, I think that living, breathing plan is something I've heard Joanne say many times in a, in comprehensive.
It's, it's a very fluid document as, as it's, it's a very fluid document. As Ms. Edwards said, years ago, we used to say it would be on a shelf. Now we say we don't want it to be on your desktop. And so it's a very fluid plan, even though it's submitted to the Department of Education. It's really something that the district should look at on a weekly, monthly, annual basis. So it should be part of, it's not like you do comprehensive planning on Friday and then you do all your other work Monday through Thursday. But rather that the comprehensive plan is an integral part of everything that you do every day.
I smell a superintendent goal review for this plan.
It sounds like from the board's perspective, then this is sort of, you know, giving guidance into, you know, direction is the way I'm seeing it to some extent.
Go ahead, Jen.
Ms. Edwards, I was going to ask three questions. Mr. Karin took the first one. Mr. Kuzi took the second one. I guess so interested in the goals. So, and this is just kind of maybe me just getting up to speed with things. You said you filed this with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Your metrics then, what you're finding, do you have to file them as well or are they just reported here to the board?
It's part of the plan. The, the, I guess, logical way that it plays out is that the goals in the plan for each year become the basis for the district goals because obviously we want to be moving in a coherent direction. But the, the targets, those things, those would be set at the local level. So the state does not, we're required to file it with them, but they don't, they do not come in and micromanage our execution of it or anything like that. That's a local decision.
My, I only have one comment, not so much a question. Well, I guess a couple, first of all, all the work that you all put in this, I could just see it. I could tell you all were, I mean, very put together. And the presentation was, I thought it was really good in, in explaining the different and solidifying the different goals that you have for the district. So I want to thank everyone who spent as much time as they did and put all the effort that they put into this. Just taking, looking at the next steps, I should say, the superintendent goals. It sounds like a lot of the goals are going to really reflect what the comprehensive plan stated. And to, to John's point, I would like to see some, I know that we still have to plan out what date we're all going to get together so that we can try to get this done within the timeline. As soon as you guys could, I would like to see some measurable goals that you can get over to the board so we can have time to digest that and then make any, you know, tweaks to it so that the board has time and that we don't feel rushed to get to that deadline.
Dr. Hartner had asked that I put that together for you so that it's available before our retreat for everybody to review and then for you to be able to talk about and give any direction.
I think that was June 5th.
Sorry, Dr. Hartner.
Perfect. So thanks again, everyone, for, for all the work that you put into this. You, a lot of you have jobs outside of the time that you invested into it. So, so thank you so much. And our next item on the agenda is going to be the health and safety plan update.
Ms. Edwards, your backup.
You know, I know that you all know how much I have been looking forward to talking to you about health and safety again, right? Okay, thank you. At least somebody was amused. That was, okay. All right. It does feel like health and safety is never going to end. So like everyone else, I am looking for, jumping ahead to 21, 22, just for, you know, I'm looking forward to a, you know, planning a school year with minimal to no need for particular health and safety aspects. So we're getting there, like we're really close. I believe there's what, four weeks of school left, you know, we're, we're on a good, good trajectory. We've had some exciting changes in the last couple of weeks. As I know that many of you know, because you sent it, you sent it to us. Effective on Memorial Day, the governor is lifting most of the COVID mitigation measures that have been in place across Pennsylvania. So how does that affect us? For us, since the capacity limits are eliminated, we are able to go back and make changes in senior prom and in graduation, for example. So seniors will now have, I forget whether it was four or five tickets with additional ones that can be requested.
Five tickets.
Five tickets, okay, because we, yeah, because we don't have the capacity limit anymore on, on this, on alumni field. So that's a very positive change. Senior prom, they're going to be able to bring the prom indoors. And students originally were not going to be able to bring any guests because of the capacity limits, even when they were going to do it outside. But they now will be able to bring a Quaker, another, a Quaker Town High School guest. So that, you know, exciting things that, that we're able to move back a little bit towards a more normal environment. So those are a couple of examples of the, the ways that'll affect us. The attestation process, Ms. Mitchell, we will no longer have to argue over what counts as a day and how many there are. So I'm sure that you will be just as happy with that as, as we all are. But the attestation process also goes away on Memorial Day. So there will not be a 14 day rolling count anymore. We don't have to worry about, you know, school closures absent some, you know, huge thing that certainly hasn't happened yet. So, so it's very positive changes. We will continue to send the notification letters for the remainder of the school year. I think our parents rely on having that as information for their decision making and so forth. So we will continue with sending the letters when we have a positive case in a building, but we don't have any of those other requirements. Okay. So then the question is, what do we still have? And what remains in effect is the masking order. And that order was originally put out in November and it specified all of the circumstances under which masks are required. It provided some exceptions and it was modified. You can jump to the next slide, Joe. It was modified, I'm sorry, I was supposed to say beep. Okay. It was modified recently. I didn't write, I should have written down the date and I didn't. But PDE or Pennsylvania Department of Health is following the CDC as they change guidelines for vaccinated individuals. And that's why none of us are required to wear masks this evening. Okay, it's because PA followed that CDC guidance. Certainly, people can still wear masks. It is an individual decision, but it is not required by the mask order any longer for vaccinated individuals. So the amendment applies specifically to vaccinated individuals. And otherwise, the rest, rest of the mask order for now remains in effect. What they stated when these changes were announced was that when Pennsylvania hit 70%, 70% vaccination rate, the intention would be to eliminate the, the masking order. So that is what remains in effect. But I think things will be, will be better for the next four weeks. So our recommendations, we have not allowed any visitors at school, you know, this year in order to keep as close to sort of a cohort model as possible within the school environment. We would recommend that, that, and most of the activities, I should say, activities that have been planned for the remainder of the year at schools like promotion ceremonies and things like that have been planned to be outside. So we would recommend allowing visitors at all those events so that parents can come to school and participate in, you know, the fifth grade promotion ceremony or in field day or, you know, similar activities that are, that are planned. I, I have cautioned principals to please not create so much work in trying to now add events, okay, that weren't already planned. In other words, we can't go back and say, we are now in four weeks going to plan everything that we used to do and try to cram it all in. So it won't be that, but there will be opportunities for parents to participate in end of year activities in school. And, and we can do so safely, which is great. Since everyone is masked still in school, because remember, students for, in large measure, have not been vaccinated, although vaccination is now available to students 12 and up, so that should start to change as well. But we would recommend changing the social distancing requirements in the health and safety plan. And this is consistent with Dr. Dampster's guidance as well to just reflect common sense best effort. And the one thing that he did note in his most recent, or in the most recent conversations, I believe, that he had with superintendents is that when masks are removed for eating and drinking, that still maintaining reasonable social distancing would be, would be prudent. We do recommend maintaining the restriction for visitors inside buildings, especially since the events that parents would tip. We do recommend maintaining the restriction for visitors inside buildings, especially since the events that parents would typically attend and so forth are already scheduled to be outdoors, that we leave that in place for the rest of the year. And in terms of the, there've been some discussion about recess masking and things like that. There are two exceptions in the mask order. When wearing a mask either creates an unsafe condition to do some activity or if it's going to cause or exacerbate a medical condition. And that's the, the section of the order that has allowed like student athletes, when they're actually competing to be unmasked. It's the same, same logic. So I think the recommendation here would be to make sure that we educate all of our staff members about those exceptions and then allow them to apply them within their daily activities in ways that make sense. So for example, if there's a gym class outside, that the teacher would be able to, you know, determine whether the students are engaged in an activity where they're required to wear masks or not. Same thing with recess. If it's, you know, if the heat index is 98 degrees, then there would, then, then we could say that students do not have to wear masks at recess because it would create an unsafe condition. And that that would be a way to be responsive to times when it, when it would create really a health problem and when it wouldn't in order to continue to comply with the governor's order. So those are the recommendations that we're, that we are bringing to you. And the next one is, you know, the recommendation for board action is to adopt those. But Joe, go to the last slide for a minute, just so we can end on a high note, you know. I would like health and safety to end on a high note. Okay. So for the 20, and we've had questions about this. For the 21, 22 school year, the information that we've received is that school operations will be able to return to normal. That COVID procedures and so forth would become more like what we do for other communicable diseases. So there's still certain levels of notification and exclusion from school and things like that. But it's more like when you get chickenpox or strep throat or measles or, you know, something like that. And then that guidance also indicated that if a masking order is still in effect, then social distancing would still be expected when eating. We do intend to serve lunches in school and so forth and have a, you know, relatively normal experience. So looking ahead, if we can just sort of stay the course a little bit for another few weeks, we can look forward to 21, 22. You know, being normal. So that concludes my feels like 125th health and safety presentation.
So is this something we should vote on right now?
Well, I had a question.
It's in the agenda, I believe.
So you're not recommending any change to say the virtual option for the rest of this year? They would still have that option available and they would still be able to go in and out?
Correct.
So it, does this mean that the teachers who are vaccinated will no longer be required to wear their mask indoors?
That is not part of the recommendation because children are not vaccinated. And so part of, I think, the importance of adults still wearing masks in school is the, is role modeling for students who are learning it. So for the rest of this year, I, I would encourage that we not, not change that. We did give buildings more flexibility when the vaccinated rules came out. So like if the principal is meeting with a teacher, they're both, and they are both vaccinated, they can remove their masks in the office while they're having their meeting. Or if the core team is getting together and it's just the adults, you know, that, and they're all vaccinated, then they can remove their, remove their masks. So they already have like that flexibility, but in front of, of students, for the most part, I think it makes sense to continue to role model what the students have to do.
I was just thinking about that, too. I was thinking like, how weird would it be if, I mean, as much as I would love to let the teachers who are vaccinated not have to do that, the kids would probably be looking at them like, well, why do I have to wear this if you don't? So.
We actually get reports about that. In fact, I got a safe to say tip earlier today that someone took a video of a teacher whose mask, they were not wearing it properly and submitted it through the Safe to Safe system for a, so people are watching, I guess, is the
Right.
is the point.
So. Haylen, I didn't see this anywhere on the agenda. So does that mean we should vote to enact these recommended changes or?
We normally have it in the agenda, is it not?
I mean, I was ripping through, but I'm on my phone here, so I may have missed it.
I mean, we can always vote on it now. That's fine. My only suggestion, I like all of these changes. I'm like you. Nancy, aren't we so ready to be done with the health and safety aspect of this, driving us all mad?
I feel like it's been, you know, I said to principals in one meeting that I feel like I'm trying to hold back the ocean with a spatula. I mean, that literally is what it has felt like all year. So.
It is, it has been a challenge. And, and you guys have worked really hard to, to meet what the board has laid out. So we appreciate that. My only suggestion is the master in recess for the kids. And, I mean, this is going to mainly apply to elementary students, right? Because the kids are not real, they're not doing recess outside of that. And I think that we recently received some evidence that is very strong that outside transmission is very rare. That alongside with the fact that kids who are of that age group are less likely to contract or transmit the virus. I'm not sure how to go about this, but I guess I, can I just motion to amend?
Well, I, I think I, I got a couple amendments. Maybe we can put them all into the one and, I mean, you, you mentioned one of them right there. So I, I had asked about, I had asked Dr. Damsker earlier in the week and got some responses via email and shared them with the board about the masks at recess and the musical. So the musical performance being much like a, a physical activity, like what the, the athletes did and what we had passed earlier in the month, or earlier last month, where we had said, you know, athletes can do it maskless. You know, the musicals, the musical cast would still be masked backstage. The audience would still be masked. Everything else would still go as planned, but the performers.
Do we have to motion them one at a time, though?
I think he just wants, I think he just wants to talk about what his issues are before you.
No, I, I can give you three motions.
Do you have to do them separately, do you think, or no?
I would think you may have different reactions from your colleagues.
All right. So I think musical, no mask, recess and gym, no mask. And this is, this was also answered in Dr. Damsker's letter where he had mentioned that quite a few other school districts in Bucks County have adopted that. So outdoor recess and outdoor gym class could be performed without masks. Again, I mean, our, our health and safety plan, Nancy did a really good job this time, sort of incorporating that. This is nice sitting right next door. I could hear her sigh from here.
I can assure you that you did not hear me sigh. If you heard something, it was not a sigh.
So the, so the gym and recess, that the students would be able to remove masks if they were doing strenuous activities at gym or recess. Not necessarily with a temperature tied to it, just being outside and the low risk it poses was enough of that thing.
Yeah. The, the intention of what I wrote there was for the teacher to have the flexibility to do that at any time that they felt it was warranted, not solely because of the temperature.
Yeah.
So that was the intention of, of communicating to them. This is the language of the exceptions to the mask order in the governor's order. Because while I would like to be able to advocate for independent decision-making in some of this, I also want to make sure that we are being respectful of things that are ordered or mandated by the, by the state. But if the staff members would be able to apply the language of exception A or exception B to whatever circumstances they, so they go on a field trip and they're, they're doing a lot of walking or whatever. The teacher could make the decision that that falls under the exception and it's appropriate for the children to be able to remove their masks if they want to. We also, I think, want to be careful that we don't create a situation where everybody removes their mask when they're not comfortable because there's pressure to do so. So I, I also think it's important to be respectful that for some families, for some children, that's an important part of our safety plan and might have factored in their decision to have their child attend live school. So we also don't want a whole bunch of children to feel like they need to switch to virtual for the last month of the year because there's, they feel like there, there aren't any safety measures in place. So I definitely respect the intent of what you're, what you're suggesting. I think the teachers would have the flexibility to apply that within the exceptions to the governor's order. And that that could work pretty, you know, pretty nicely. If we come back on June 10th and it hasn't been working nicely, then we would, you would have time to do something for the last two weeks of the year that was different. Or let's be optimistic. Maybe the mask orders will be revised between now and then. Maybe we'll get to 70% vaccination.
The only fear I have with that is we're going to get emails being on the board that, you know, why does my teacher at Trumbowersville allow their kids to not have masks, but my teachers at PAF have to wear masks?
And the good news is, that's not a board member's responsibility. So you can say, talk to your principal. Thank you for that.
You're right, I can.
Yeah, because, because we need to get, the public needs to understand what the board's responsible for. That's micromanaging. That's not, they can write us all.
Also the voice of the, the populace that elected us.
But, but they have a proper order, you know, that's, that's.
They do. They do. I mean, yes, they do to us, but, but they could say, I asked my principal and they said it's up to the teacher. That's what we're doing by instituting this change. We're giving each individual teacher their own autonomy.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's not for us to solve everybody's personal gripe.
We're going to set a policy right now. This is the proper.
Exactly right.
We're going to set a policy that, that will leave this, make this more consistent over the whole thing. So what Dr. Damsker had, had recommended is that the masks are no longer required. You can wear them if you want.
All right, let's throw them one at a time. So that way we get through them, Chris?
Well, I got one, the, the last thing I was going to say here is in Pen Ridge, they are, they, they have in their health and safety plan that they're going to follow Bucks County Department of Health's guidelines moving forward. So every time there's one of these slight changes, like masks at recess and stuff like that, they don't have to come back and have these giant reports, these meetings, these votes. They just adopt them. They send a letter out to their parents that says, hey, Bucks County Health Department changed their guidelines. Here they are. And that's it. So we could, we could go that route.
I think it's not overcomplicated, though. We have four weeks off to school.
Well, that, that makes it less complicated. Then everything's up to.
I don't know. I think you're going to have a lot of disagreement on exactly how to implement all those things. Let's keep it simple. Let's start with the things that we, that we talked about. So I, I'm fine with motioning for students to, do I have to say elementary students or it doesn't matter really?
I think that other districts have captured on the basis that anytime there's any physical activity involving recess or gym, kids will not be required to wear masks. And I think the general consensus being provided to teachers is, listen, you're not going to run over and, and put a mask on the kid that's playing a game, sitting on, you know, or talking to a friend six feet away. Use some discretion on separating out, but the policy is physical activity.
Okay. So how should I word that?
Well, I think the wording, as I understand it, is number one, that you're going to adopt the proposed recommendations to modify, together with the understanding that masks will not be required during physical activity at recess or gym class. And the other one is.
Musical. Can we just put the three terms right there?
At musicals or orchestra or whatever else, and you're performing arts.
Right. On the, on the musical, this was discussed with the, with the teachers who are leading that activity, who for several different reasons that Mr. V outlined in an email, preferred to leave things as they are, this close to their performance.
And they still have the option to do that. We're just, I'm removing the barrier from the board.
If you tell them that they have to do it without masks.
Before we get into a deep discussion on musical, can we stick with the masks at recess?
Let me just, let's stick with, you guys heard what Jeff said, Mr. Garten said, so let's just go with that. I'm not going to repeat it. That's my motion. Can I get a second on my motion, please?
He mentioned musical, too.
I'll withdraw my discussion about musicals.
All of, all the other stuff. I need a second.
Second, Mr. Kurn.
Okay, let, discuss. Does anyone oppose it? Well, we're just talking about masks right now at recess.
Recess and.
This is really messy. And so I just want to clarify.
Oh, the musical and performing, he'll be later. Next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So right now, we're just talking about recess and gym.
Recess and gym.
I, I just have to tell you guys, you know, kids have been so resounding throughout, I'm going to be quick. My seven-year-old was talking to him yesterday and I was like, you know, honey, you guys still wear masks at recess, right? He said, yeah, mom, we are, but it's getting hot, mom. And he never complains about wearing his mask. He's like, I do not want to wear them at recess anymore. And I just thought to myself, you know what, there's not a lot of time left, but this could be a real gift to our kids, just to give them a little glimpse of what normalcy is going to look like again. So that being said, anybody else have anything else before we vote?
Yeah, just one thing to clarify. Is this gym and recess outdoors?
Is it, it's indoors as well, right?
I believe it was, yeah.
Indoors with physical activity.
With physical, and we currently have, Jen, just so you know, we, we currently have it to where our kids who are in, in sports, they don't have to wear a mask while, yeah. So this would kind of apply. It'd just be for everybody else.
That's fine. I just wasn't sure.
Yep.
Wasn't sure if it included the indoor. I didn't know if we had to specify that in the.
Thank you. All right. I'm just going to say, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Yes.
I'm opposed.
All right, Mr. Klein, Mr. Klein and Mr. Reimers. So the motion carries seven to two.
Now, the, the motion I wanted to make with the mask, again, this doesn't guarantee that they need to wear a mask. It leaves it up to the directors of the musical. I'm removing the board and administrate, or in district level administration restrictions. It's still up to them whether or not they want to institute masks for the performance. That was kind of my compromise that I had worked out today within my own head. So I would like to.
Did you argue with your own head?
I always do. Always.
He actually lost the argument for a while.
So, so, so the motion I'd like to make is an addendum on to the health and safety plan changes that allows the musical directors to, to make the decision on whether or not to require masks for the musical performance outside of, Into the Woods is the name of the musical. I don't know if that needs to be included.
Is it restricted now?
They have to wear a mask right now.
They're, yeah, they're, they're planning to wear masks now.
What? What, what, what rules are they following?
Well, they, they devised a health and safety plan under the supervision of, of the.
It's a separate health and safety plan for them.
It's their own health and safety plan, but they did it under the guise of our former health and safety measures, you know, now that they could be outside, everything else. I, I'm just removing our barrier that we would have. If they still want to move along with that, then they're free to still require masks if that's how the directors choose.
When do we vote on that? Was it the last time?
It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a little while.
You know, if, if, if Mr. Spears' motion is simply to allow those people in charge of the musical to make the decision on their own, is there reason the administration objects to allowing those people who are actually putting the musical on to have a say?
No, I believe they've already done so.
I thought so as, I thought so as well. So it'd be, Chris.
I think the majority of those kids, though, I think the majority of them want to be able to perform without a mask. And I think that there's a small amount of students, I'll second the motion, there's a small amount of students who maybe don't feel comfortable with that. And in that case, I would tell them to, to wear the mask if they feel uncomfortable. Because what we should be encouraging in telling our students is that the outdoors is such a small risk. And I wouldn't see even why we wouldn't, if, if we know a majority of the students prefer not to have the mask by, while performing, we should encourage them to not have to.
And I believe that.
But Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Spear, your motion is not to allow the students to decide for themselves.
No.
themselves.
No.
It's to allow, that's not what you said. You said to allow the, 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 the staff, the, the people in charge of the music to make that decision, and that's not the students.
Okay, what we're doing is we're removing, let's be clear on this, the, and if we need to do a new motion, we will do it. We're amending the previous health and safety plan that applied to students who were performing to not be required to wear a mask when outdoors. I'm not even going to say it applies to this particular thing. We could say any student who's performing a musical, whatever it is, if it's outdoors, they're not required to, to wear a mask, but they can if they want to.
It's a lot like a sport, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, it's physically exertive, it's, you know, they're on stage, it's going to be May 23rd outside in the middle of the day, so, you know, it could very well be 90 degrees and those kids are going to be out there.
Do you want to get somebody to second that since I clarified it?
I think what you're saying is if anyone's performing outdoors, it may not be required to wear masks.
Okay. Chris, can you second that for me?
I'll second that.
Well, but what if the, what if the directors wish everyone to still be masked?
We would encourage them.
It's too different.
We would, we would want them to do whatever they want, but we would encourage them not to because the risk is very small. That would be my opinion.
So we're taking the, the responsibility of saying, you don't have to do it because we said so, and I'm not.
We're not overcomplicating this. It's, it's really simple. It's, it's outdoor activity, we allow it for sports, we should allow it for things that are, are, are other activities. That's it.
My question was just, is it the student that has the choice or the adult in charge of the activity?
Comments from Mr. Spear initially are different than the motion that was just made.
I am going to say it's a student decision, personally. No?
I think, you know, it would seem to me to be the leader, right? Of, I mean, what, what, what we're trying to do is say to the leader of whoever, should you choose this path, you're okay, and if you choose this path, you're okay, and that's it, right?
I believe that the reason I made that motion is at least so, so we're not putting any students, since it's a cast, you're not one person on stage, you're on the stage with a few other kids. So since it's a cast, I was going to leave it up to the directors to make those decisions.
But do we do that for sports? We don't tell, do we tell the coaches that they can require masks?
I, I think, so if we look at what we did with the sports, we, we did, we said if you are more comfortable in one, you can absolutely wear a mask. And if you don't want to wear a mask, you don't have to wear a mask.
The coach does have, does have authority over it though.
If they're playing an outdoor, in a, in a way, game at a place that masks.
We said we would be respectful of places we went and their decisions if they, if they wear masks or don't wear masks. And we, and we have, I, I mean, I've been to home games where the entire softball team wore masks, not because we wanted to, but the other team wanted us to wear a mask and our, our team was respectful of that. That's what we tried to do. So I think.
I think it should be similar to that. It's just, we're, we are removing the, the mandate, but it's up to you to do what you think is the right thing as a coach or as a director.
And I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that.
Nancy Anne is asking because it, the motion is making it sound to me, and maybe this is where I'm getting confused, that we're giving the students the responsibility, but Nancy Anne seems to be asking if we're giving it to the. If you look at what we did with the, I mean, you know, our students may have elected not to do it, our coach mandates they wear masks to play, to play against a team. No, I understand, I'm, I'm asking for clarification on the motion, so that way we can all be on the same page.
Okay.
Okay, I can clarify the motion right now. So I would like to make a, you have to, we have to vote, you have to remove your motion.
I mean, I never clarif, I never said, I, I didn't say who directs what, I just simply said the motion was to not require a mask.
Just needs to be modified to say not require a mask for any activity by way of a performance outdoors to be decided by the director who is managing the function or managing the performance.
What he said.
I'll second that.
Can I guess that again? Hold on.
No.
Rewind.
I'll give it to you tomorrow. I'm afraid I'll change it, there'll be another question.
All right, any other discussion then?
The one thing I want to clarify is, it is my understanding, maybe I'm misinformed here, I thought that the directors of this performance, the principal of the high school, have already weighed in on their feelings on this matter. So regardless, at least for the musical, regardless of what we decide here, they've already made their decision. So it seems to me a moot action that we're taking here.
Maybe so, but maybe not.
That was a decision they made maybe before they found out things that they do today.
That happened today, yeah, there, there have been new, new events that have happened today and.
They're not vaccinated.
And, and actually quite a few of those students are vaccinated, but.
I mean, it's kind of irrelevant, I think that, let's let them make the choice now.
We're, we're removing, we're removing the, the district level barrier and leaving it up to them.
And Ron, that's my, my point in asking for the clarification because we all saw what Mr. V said to us in that email, or I don't know if it was from Nancy Anne or whoever it was, about the reasons why they chose to go that path. I, if, I'm not sure I would want to take that, that away from that.
We're not.
We're not, we're not.
That's why I was.
All right, the point, that point has been made multiple times, guys. All right, we're ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Who's opposed?
Me.
Mr. Klein, motion carries eight to one. All right, looks like the rest of the superintendent report is read only, sir?
We're still in the superintendent.
Did we, did we need to make a motion on Nancy Anne's modifications she recommended?
I said that was the first motion because it was made with a clarification on recess and gym.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote to accept the, the whole thing though?
You did that, that was part of the motion when you decided the recess and gym.
Thank you for the clarification and the questions. So we're going to move on to our standing committee reports. Some of these you might not have met, just let me know. Education, Mr. Klein.
Yeah, we, our meeting that was scheduled for this evening was postponed, so we did not meet.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. McCucci.
Yeah, thank you. So we met on, on the sixth, and it was recorded for anybody who wanted to watch it. So the administration presented data on the current year fiscal, the finances, as well as the proposed budget for next year. The deficit for this year is now projected below $3 million. The committee discussed the motion for a proposed final budget, which is on our agenda for tonight. After discussions with many of the committee members, we would like to see a zero percent, but agreed to move forward with a arbitrary 3.5% in the preliminary budget, as there is outstanding decisions such as the QE, full-day kindergarten, the discussion on the ball fields, the baseball field. The board will be voting on the final budget, June 10th. There was a lot of discussion around this, and, and we were pretty clear that there, at least in the finance group, that 3.5% was not likely to happen. Probably 1.75 maybe, but really a zero percent is, is what we're after. So after that, we, we, we did hear in the, in the facilities meeting about the, a ball field as well as QE, and I'm sure Chris will go over that. We also talked about the SSC contract, SSC is our, meaning general services, I guess, yeah, contract. And as we heard in, in prior presentations, they're struggling to hire and retain staff simply because of their hourly rate. After multiple meetings with the administration, there was a proposal on the table to increase, tonight to increase the staff wages to $14 per hour. The increased cost would be roughly about $114,000 per year. The administration recommended using the federal funds that we were be, that are being used for nightly sanitizing, be reallocated for the, to cover these costs for over the two-year, and then we'll reevaluate it after that. The committee made a recommendation to move forward with that. We talked about a fixed asset appraisal, so fixed asset appraisals essentially, they come in, they evaluate our assets, and then they, they market, this is part of a requirement that school districts do a year over year. John Kern was really in favor of it, so if you want to see, go back and look, because he was very, very, very passionate about getting this done efficiently. So I think the biggest thing was the recommendation that we use the current firm that we've used in the past, cost was around $15,000. Joe Cuzzo presented an opportunity for our copy or lease and a renewal of our contract with Cannon. He's really negotiating hard and is going to do a nice job coming in well below what we projected, so thank you, Joe, on that.
We're going to get double copies every time we just press one.
Yeah. So votes for tonight, renewing the student accident insurance, renewing the contract with Chartwell's, as well as approving meal prices for next year. And then as standard, we went through the monthly updates on the charter school enrollments, the meal counts, and other items which can be found on board docs. Fellow committee and Zach, did I miss anything or misstate anything? That is my report as submitted on today's date.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Harner, you officially, it looks like you're not going to win this, if you looked at the time. Very sorry for you.
Already communicated that out.
All right, we're going to move on to our facilities committee, Mr. Spear.
Okay, we met out on May 6th, yes, it's right at the top of my paper. We discussed the Fifth Street parking lot again, and we had discussed that the civil engineering report that was done in the fall regarding the parking lot, you know, as a reminder, there are some local businesses that brought concerns to the board about flooding. The report states that the parking lot is not the cause, and it was provided to the business owners that reached out to the board. So the business owners did get a copy of that report as well. For stormwater management, the district office is part of the Milford Industrial Complex that, right, right across the street there, there's a retention basin that needs to be redone, and the pipes moving in and out of that need to be redone. There will be a cost to the district, it's part of a, a sort of association, and our cost will be about $7,000 in towards that, is our portion of the retention basin repair.
So we're going to pump the water from Fifth Street up here to the district?
No, no, this is, yeah, I mean, I, I believe then we'd probably have more problems. So we had two really big presentations. Dewey Engineering and the Schrader Group presented options for renovating and adding to QE. The options included renovating of the existing building as well as in addition. Options were reviewed in detail and costs ranged from 18 to 26 million dollars. The debt services to the district would be roughly 600,000 to 1 million dollars per year. The committee did not make any recommendations yet. Dewey Engineering also prevented, presented options for a baseball field. Those options included a field behind the sixth grade center and a field or fields on Pumping Station Road. Options from grass or turf were reviewed and prices ranged from around 2.5 million for a single field to around 8 million for multiple fields and other site upgrades. The committee did not make any recommendations yet. We are still looking at a couple options, I believe, and trying to get a couple more numbers. Dewey is still getting us another option for behind the sixth grade center, correct?
They, they presented an option based on what they did at other school districts, but I think there was some conversations about looking at that in a little more detail, but they did talk about what a field might cost over there.
Okay, so we are then, I guess we're at the point where we have to try to figure out how to pay for these projects if we want to move forward with them. So, you know, I, I guess we're going to go back and forth with the finance quite a few times, with education and curriculum, probably all the committees, all of us are going to be involved with this. These are big projects, and I look forward to trying to solve these problems.
Can I, can I make one recommendation with regards to this? Can we rank as a board or prioritize for finance where we want to see, what are the, what, what's the top thing? What's the second thing and what's the third thing?
Well, can we add some existing things to that already that maybe we want to cut?
But I'm, I'm thinking, you know, does, does all-day kindergarten for us as a collective unit outweigh a baseball field? And, and doesn't a baseball field outweigh QE renovations or does QE renovations top? Like where, where does the board sit? Because how, how going back and forth trying to figure out how to fund these things, it would be a major problem.
So, so Keith.
That would be a sec, yeah.
Funding is a second step before, you know, you have to decide what you want to do.
I think we need a real clear direction from this board, and, and maybe for some people, it's all three of them, and their priorities are all number one, I don't know.
So Keith, I, I think that's a great idea. I think we could have a special, another one of your special finance committee meetings where we could possibly even bring some other current projects or current programs that are in there and say, you know what, some of these new projects may outweigh some current things. You know, ma, maybe some of these things are more important than some things we have going on now. So i, if we're prioritizing things, we can bring in some other things that may actually aid in funding of these projects and make that.
So I talked to Ms. Edwards and Dr. Harner a little bit about these things, and we're talking about full-day kindergarten. I think it's, there's no doubt, like, we all want full-day kindergarten at some point. One thing we were talking about is, does it make sense for us to phase it in? And I was interested in that method because we have a declining enrollment, at least thus far, the trend is going that direction. So if we're continuing to see that declining enrollment from a financial standpoint, since we do have so many cost drivers, we could, and I think that the community, just knowing that we would really be interested in doing this at some point, even though we're phasing it in and maybe not getting it all started for next year, would be a really, it would be hope, they would be hopeful, just knowing that we were going to have that. And also, the other thing, Dr. Hoffman, you were mentioning, I think, or maybe it was Ms. Edwards, I can't remember, about the curriculum would be different for, do you want to talk just a tiny bit about that? So give us time for that as well.
Sure, for full-day, Kay, you're talking about? Right now, our curriculum in full-day kindergarten is targeted towards the population that we're serving, which is our neediest, most at-risk population of students. So when we move to a full day, if we move to a full-day kindergarten for all students, we would need to adjust the learning to meet the needs of all the students who are in front of us, not just the neediest learners. So we would be looking at revising what, what's taught.
Yeah, so in that way, I just feel, I mean, you look at it, we have a lot of things we need to spend money on, a lot of cost drivers, and we could use the extra time to really get this, nail this down as far as the curriculum. That's just my thought. As far as the baseball field, Dr. Harner also mentioned that we could get a bit, a good chunk of that paid for through advertising, advertisements, is that correct? So I think that, just to give you guys a little bit of my feeling as far as those things, helping us relieve some of these big financial burdens.
I, I had a question about the, the baseball field, actually. We, I only remember when it was, we looked at the cost of fixing up Memorial Park, now this is before the most recent situation, but if I remember right, that cost was considerably less than the cost to build over at Pumping Station. Does this mean that we can then go back and look at that?
Well, that would only be one field and it would still be within the floodplain, so that was part of the, and, and I guess now with the new, with the new condemnation of the grandstands there, it, it probably puts a little bit more cost into that. And I didn't know if that, that, that cost, that 1.6 million or whatever, included renovating those grandstands.
Yeah, that's why I couldn't remember, so that's what I was doing.
Yeah.
Do we want to try to tackle this now or should we? No, okay, I just want to make sure.
The only thing to Keith's point, okay, was we need to prioritize things. Now, as I see it, I guess technically we don't even have to do this now if we want to punt it down, we, we want to, we don't want to make a big decision right here, right now, but with the budget coming out, you know, we're, we're just passing the 3.5%. you know, we're just passing the 3.5% placeholder right now, and then we got to make a decision next month. Well, if we don't have anything that we're going to prioritize, I mean, if we decide to go ahead with full day K, and we start phasing it in, well, that's a cost driver. That's will, that may sway somebody's decision to go zero or 1.75. If we decide to go, that, that the baseball field is important, even if we don't build it and start designing next year, that's a cost driver. That's something you've got to consider. Are you going to vote zero, or are you going to vote 1.75? And if we're going to renovate QE, even if we're planning to renovate QE, that's another thing. If we don't sit here, maybe not now, again, we could conceivably discuss this at our next meeting before we vote on the budget. But we're going to have to make a decision before the budget as to what we think is the priority, where you can't adequately choose a budget.
I was suggesting we have a special meeting for that.
I think that what I was getting at was, and Dr. Harner sent out a summary that came out today right before this meeting. So I would say, take a look at that. Because the decisions you make regarding the June final budget is going, is clearly, I mean, you could see what it's going to do in, in this, this document. So, you know, whether you'll be in a, in a red state, which they have it here marked as, you know, unknown, high level of risk, you know, may, potential for cuts of other programs in the future to fund it, or high, you know, extremely high taxes over the, you're committing future boards to high taxes or, or massive cuts for the next five or 10 years. So I, I think it's imperative that we prioritize. Again, I, I go back to something I said in Finance Committee. We stay focused on our mission as a school district with regards to educating our students. That we all can't have airplanes and helicopters. And, and that you really have this in your mind about what you're going to do come June 10th with regards to setting it up, not only for this one, this year, or it's going to be compounded in, you know, taxes over the next five years, and we're going to have to have a better, really a clear direction from this board.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good point. And, and another angle of attack would be from the, from the funding side. What if we had a straw poll right now for who's in favor of 0%? Because if we, if we have a going-in position about the funding that we're willing to ask our taxpayers to bear, you know, that, that, that will automatically say we have to kick some of these down the road because we're not going to burden our taxpayers this year with those types of funding requests.
But on the. You know, before you, you commit to spending $2 or $3 million on a baseball field, I would, as a, as a board, really say you need to have, if you're, if you're planning to fund it with donations and advertisement, you really need to have that cash locked up and committed before I think anybody should vote on it. I mean, I wouldn't vote on a, on a $3 million with a hope and a prayer that we get advertisement money.
I'm with you.
So again, I think it's, it's, it's really in our behalf. I mean, I'll be honest with you, Chris, those numbers that they came at us with at, at facilities were astronomically high.
For the baseball field.
For everything.
No, I agree, and that's why I believe.
For that, and, and, and I would say that, you know, if I had to say today, I could say with 100% certainty, I'd rather see full day kindergarten which is going to make the best impact on students and, and performance overall than a baseball field, and quite honestly, you know, renovating QE, although I know, I understand we're going to have to make some decisions on how to tune that place up. And then to John's point, I, I see where John's going with this, but the other way of looking at that would be to make the decision, let's use full day K just as the example. And we say, okay, let's do the full day K. And then when we come back in June, we would be able to say, okay, this is exactly how it's going to impact, and we would have that as a concrete concept rather than this, this, you know, fabulous concept of what it might do with this, you know, this heat chart. And the same for the other two, or in Chris's case, more.
Well, that's why I was thinking, having this separate meeting, we can really dive into all this.
Are you talking about another board meeting?
Another, well, like a finance, a finance meeting where we're really diving into this.
We don't need to really dive into it, do we? Those are giant numbers that don't require a whole lot of thought.
Numbers could be knocked down significantly if we do decide, maybe there's other programs in other places, or there's other.
Like what?
There's other.
Do you have any ideas?
I do, but I, I'm not gonna, I, I would rather save them for a, a committee meeting after I put more time into it and looked at it, but I have ideas, sure.
Because for, for me, the, the, the options about full decay, especially the, you know, if we sneak up on it and, and don't, don't just do it all, all or nothing. That I think you could do with the budget as is. It was zero, right? I mean, it's small enough money that can, you know, a few hundred thousand or whatever it is. Boom, and to your point, Keith, we impact a lot more people, less money. It's, it's our mission. I mean, that's a no-brainer, and, and it satisfies my, you know, my desire is, you know, the, the the community is still impacted greatly, and I'd love to not impact them yet again, you know, with, with more taxes.
John, I'll give you one of my ideas later in the meeting. It's a cliffhanger.
One of my concerns with phasing it in, and you're right, that, that's something I think we could do right now. In fact, I know there's some, some thought into doing it already over at one of the elementary schools with a pilot program. But then how do we decide who gets to have it? So there's this inequity that we're creating in education by saying, okay, it can go into Trumpbowersville, it can go into QE or wherever else. You guys get lucky. You guys get to have it for an extra year, two years, three years, whatever it takes to roll it in. So we talked about inequity of education in, in the committee meeting when we talked about QE and how important that was. We talked about it here in the presentation that Nancy Anne just did, you know, so how, I, I don't see how we can say.
Yeah, but the analogy of phasing it in.
Let me finish. I don't see how we can say it's important in one case, but then not in, in another. So, so phasing it in, you know, yes, I, I think that's something we can do right now, and, and, you know, we could have it in September.
Yeah, and, and I think it's also like customer demand. When I talk about phasing in, it's like our family liked half-day K. We've heard some, some people like it, so I don't want to get rid of half-day K because some people like it. And it'd be great, I don't know if we have knowledge, but I, if I could wave a magic wand and get a poll that says how many people want F-day, full day? Because I'm, I'm not thinking of it as, like, if we build it, will they come? I don't know. Maybe we only need a little bit more. So that's the other reason is to gauge the appetite of the community.
But also, again, the, the, the inconsistent you see with your analogy is that you forget that we already have full day K. And it's not for a single school and a single community. It is for those students who are the most neediest, and they are bussed from, I mean, Dr. Hoffman, I'm sorry, we're talking about full day K, and those individuals who are in full day K right now, they're not local to a single community. They're all around our district, and they are bussed in to where the full day K is? Or is it strictly available for those kids who live in a certain area?
We're actually really fortunate to have classes at each of the buildings so that students can go to full day K.
So again, the full day K, for those kids who need it, is already there in each building. If we're going to phase it in, it'd have to be the same way. We'd have to do it, again, you, you, I'm not saying larger class sizes, but we'd have to, an additional class in each building or something like that, okay? So the concept that phased in would somehow be inequitable, I think, is lacking because it'd be, again, geared towards the need, not towards the community and the location.
I appreciate, Brian, what you're saying as far as, you know, are, you know, you're developing this potential for inequities. So one of the questions that I was just asking Dr. Hoffman was specifically around, you know, how do you, how do you figure out who is offered full day today versus half-day?
Sure, so we have a pretty robust process where we actually bring students in and, and provide them with some opportunity to test. We actually then bring in students who score on the lower end of that test again for a second test at the end of the summer, closer to the start of the school year. And then from where we make, make recommendations, we try to keep the numbers low per classroom around 12 or so so that once the students actually start school, we can find the additional students who maybe now are not on grade level with their peers and then move them into the program even into September and October as we need to.
So at the end of it, there would be, so all the kids coming in for kindergarten, you have a list?
We do, yes.
So you could theoretically phase it in by needs, like who needs it the most, right? Done by needs today, right? So if you, you would just expand that list, and that list would grow over time.
Who's, who's going to be overseer of that list?
Well, we, I mean, that's our responsibility. That's what we do now, but I think that the, the phased-in approach does account for space and staff. So the reason it's being phased in is because, as an example, we may have a building who has the luxury of having an extra room, and we may have more retirements than we thought, or less retirements, and, and have a teacher that we could put in that extra room, and then therefore that building would be, I think, to Mr. Reimer's point, would be the one who now has full day kindergarten for all. And so that was the inequity concern with phasing it in. If you wanted to choose to bus students to different kindergarten locations, I guess that could be mitigated, but that wasn't part of the original plan, I think, that we came up with. It was more based on both physical space in the buildings and then also staff availability. And that's why you'll see on this chart that the immediate plan comes with a larger cost because that's hiring all of the teachers that we would need at once.
Is there a way to know ahead of time the demand for this? You think?
Sure, we, I mean, we love to survey, right? I mean, we could, we could survey people, I think, as they, as they registered for kindergarten or we already compile list of, of all of the parents who have already registered for kindergarten. I'm sure that there would be a way to reach out to them and ask them.
Parents, I think, are disappointed their kids from my, that can't go all day. They're like, what do you mean a half-day program? Full stop, mouth drop. So some like, you know, I guess I could understand why some parents would want a half-day program, but I definitely don't think that's the average. I think that that's a rare, you know.
I think it's probably rare.
And it's worth asking a question, because I don't know. It's just a guess.
All right, well, we had a lot of good conversation, but I don't think we're going to solve this. What do you guys want to do? Do you want, I mean?
Can we set a meeting before the next board meeting where we go over these heavy budget items and then?
With a goal of what?
With a goal of coming to the next meeting fully prepared to vote on these items? Or set a timeline for implementing these items or, or throw away some of these items?
We could certainly have another meeting to like go through all these individually again, but I think.
And even review current.
Or throw more on the pie, why not? I'm just saying that I think as we're sitting here, I think we all agree that full day K is a goal. And at least to the extent that it's phased in, it should certainly be something we put at the top of our list. I don't know if anybody else disagrees with me, but I think full day K is numero uno. I don't care what the list is. I don't care. I don't think you're going to get one that this board thinks is more important than full day K at this time.
Thank you, Rick.
Just enough, while we do have a Finance Committee meeting June 3rd, which is the week before, so.
Perfect.
Okay.
A little longer, but.
It is 10:15, so what that means is.
Well, then, what's the goal to, is it to create that priority?
I guess, I, I think the, the goal should be that we'll give, we'll give the administration time to get ready, a, a more viable plan to implement full day K on a phased, a phased approach, and we'll have that for that Finance Committee meeting, and we'll be able to vote on it by the next.
We have a plan for a phased approach. We already have that. We, your board was briefed, the Education Committee was briefed, Finance was briefed.
Okay, well, then, I mean, if you want to, if you want to vote now, or you want to wait, that's up to you.
Look, I think we should wait. I think there's some other things that we still need to talk about.
I agree.
I think we all know that we, full day K is a priority, right?
I think Keith was just asking for some guidance, guys, about like what they should keep in mind. So I don't think we need to vote on anything, or I think we just need to move on to the next report.
Yeah.
Dr. Hoffman, what I would, what I would ask if you could, whether it's at this facility or meeting that Chris is talking about or not, if you could give us a little bit more in-depth analysis of what that phased-in approach that you were talking about, based on need, would be. So that way we have a better understanding because the way Ron's explaining it, I wasn't sure I understood what he was explaining, so.
And to Keith's point, I think the idea of obtaining funding for the baseball field prior to executing that, so it might look like we may not be able to make a decision on that this year, as much as I know people are really looking forward to it. We may have to table that for another year until we secure some additional funding.
I'll second that motion.
Right? I'm just saying it out loud.
I think we got to get back to our roots. So I think, I, I, I would love nothing more to have a beautiful baseball field. And that should be our goal. But, but we, we can't do all our goals.
Right.
In the same year.
Dr. Harner, you wanted to share?
Yes, ma'am. I, we can do a lot of these things. You just got to tell us how much money we have. And we can give you strategies on how to get it done, give us a timeline and all that. Full day K, we can have it done two to three years max. Having, having teacher, expecting teacher availability with our declining enrollment. We're going down 800 students over the next four or five years because we know that we have live births. What, live births, that's the terminology we use and are the county uses, the nation uses. And we know that last year, very few, a lot less students, 4% at least nationally, were, less students were born than the year before. So we know we're going to have teachers available to do that over, over time. You, you look at a baseball field, as you can see, Joe, would you put, please put the, the, the matrix up there, please, again, so the community and the board can see. This is something that Zach put together for us, talking about what your needs and desires are. As you can see, you go from QE renovation to down the full day K phased in, and what area that you can have it in. You tell us what dollar figure you're, you're willing to, to spend, and we can tell you what we can get done. Baseball field, we can get it done with a combination of partnerships with one of the hospital systems, because they have historically partnered with districts to build baseball fields. Or, and football fields and all those kind of things, and, and the leftover revenue from, from NIDIC and our fund balance. But then if you do that, trying to do your, if you do that out of using your fund balance, then you have to go and, and to, to take a, a bond to build NIDIC, a million dollars, 600,000, excuse me, QE from 600 to a million dollars a year, then your bond rating goes down, and then you have to go up. So there's, you just tell what your objectives are, and we can piece it together. Getting back to your top priority, and I know Lisa had some concerns, wasn't sure what you were after. Each community and that you've approved the redistricting plan for has so many students that are in there. We know who they are and who's coming in basically for kindergarten for next year. For example, at, at Trumpbowersville, we have it, if we put in all the students, instead of being homogeneously grouped, full day K, students who need full day K the most down there, and you put them in with all the other kindergarten students, we would have a reasonable class size and get it done with the existing teachers. Matter of fact, Mr. Schmucker, the principal down there, has asked to do that as a trial run for next year. And that may happen depending upon enrollments, disenrollments, move, people moving out, people moving in this summer. In other schools, we can get that done two to three years max at no cost, no additional cost. It's a cost because there, the teachers in there. So if you give us a figure and a philosophy, we can come back and bring, bring all those things back now. I.
Are you asking for that? Are you saying you want a number tonight?
So then, may I propose something?
And, and, and the last thing that, that I, that the community doesn't know about, that's, that's an updated on the chart, is the, that Senator Cor, Corman from State College, who's the majority chair, they, his bill passed the Senate earlier this week, and it's about allowing every parent, every parent, all 1.8 million parents are, parents of 1.8 million students in Pennsylvania, if they didn't feel their student got the education they needed, and they wanted to repeat a school year, that they may do that. That's hundreds of millions of dollars of new educational costs that has just been taxed into the system. That's why I call it the Corman tax. Or at least I had it in another one, maybe Zach took it out of this one. Or at least I had it on another one, maybe Zach took it out of this one.
We we spent a lot of time.
But ma'am, but the but that bill is passed the house or the Senate, it's going to the House, it's most likely going to pass. The board and the community needs to know about that because that will take up easily. I I predict if it if it does get signed in the law, that's going to take up our full tax increase and you won't be able to do anything else. That's why I wanted the board to hear it tonight, the community to hear it, understand the impact. So those are your priorities and you just tell us how much money we have and we give you the the optimal things as as Mr. McCucci was putting out there.
My proposal would be at this committee meeting to present us with the options for full day K, whether or not we do it all at once, just do it now. Or present us with the option, the second option of this kind of phased in approach based on need that Mr. McCucci, Mr. Jackson were talking about as one component. And then the other component, and you said we can do the baseball field with donations and and corporate partnerships and things like that. Can you come to us at that meeting again with what that's going to look like so we can have that money? Or we can be assured that we would have that money before we make that decision? Or at least have a reasonable expectation of.
And it's all contingent upon a 3.5% tax hike.
So when when are we going to? Did we get the EASR money or we didn't get it yet?
No, so so easier two, we filled out the application for the bigger one, easier three, we we didn't, the I don't even think the application's open yet in the state system.
Okay. Is that the 5 million you were talking about or is that what we have?
Yeah, I think easier three is 3.4 of the the five.
Do we have any idea when we're going to expect that?
Well, we have to fill out, we have to have a plan. There's a lot of rules around that that, you know, we're still attending conferences and webinars. And I believe we have to to present it to the community before implementing it and then we can apply for the money.
Now, just to be clear.
None of that has been in any of the budget forecasts.
See, that's what I was going to say. There's quite a bit of money that we're not including in these conversations, right?
So we do have included in next year around 700,000 of the Easter two money for certain things. The rest of it, no, we didn't include, but the the theory is it doesn't matter because typically what you're going to do is if you're getting let's make the math easy, a million dollars in revenue, you're going to add a million dollars in expenses because you you got to phase it in and phase it out. So it's normally new, new things that you're spending the money on that you can easily then take away when the money runs out.
Like baseball.
I don't know if it's just because I'm tired, but that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, baseball fields may not qualify for it.
Because you can use it on facilities, you could, there's a lot, I know there's a list of things. We're not going to.
Yeah.
There's not going to be, like, we can use the money for things that we need now.
Yeah, there's a, well, not to get in all the weeds, but there's a lot of rules around what you can and can't use it for. And like 20% of it or more has to be used on learning loss.
Right.
So like.
Social, commercial, earning.
Which is going to be additional expenses and then you use the revenue to offset it.
So maybe include that a little bit more in the next meeting. I'm going to move on. Thank you, guys. I'm I hate cutting people off, but it is late and we.
Who's the next person up on the poll?
Oh, so by the way, next finance committee meeting is going to be a very important one. I urge you all to attend.
Well, you know, I was just going to say that so that that's a meeting where you want to talk about the wants. And I was just going to say, we could very quickly take a straw poll of I'm going to say I'm for the 0% tax, you know, so that you don't get any illusions that I'm going to, at this year, fund anything past past full day K. So I don't know if you want that kind of an input because then I can just tell you, you don't, no sense discussing QE. Because if everybody here says 0%.
But there's a discussion that needs to happen anyway about QE because the discussion needs to be if we're going to keep QE or not. And I think that having another board, you know, six new board members, not new, but you know what I mean? There's six board seats up that I I don't know that I would be comfortable for us to make that decision. Because you can't just say whether or not you're going to renovate QE this year, it doesn't matter. Because if you're going to keep QE, then you're going to have to renovate at some point.
Well, those funds have to be allocated if any of that Easter money is to be used by Zach or Jeff. One of you probably has that term, I believe, by the end of 2022.
There are time constraints, yes.
Just write down Boiler as a holding spot.
All right, if you guys want me to, if you guys want me to keep running this meeting, then.
I want the facilities to go back and really push on those. We we heard one, two preliminary plans. That's not enough to make a decision on QE.
No.
I mean, those numbers were, I mean, I don't want to speak for David, but I think he was pretty vocal. This was more than what we thought it would be in an era where we were trying to keep things lower, spend lower. And so I think the facilities got to go back to to those, the drawing board with QE and see what else, what are other options?
Well, I mean, I I believe, no matter what, it it's, there's asbestos and lead, right? That has to be taken care of. Once you start doing that.
Totally.
Actually, like, one of the cheapest things to do in the whole list of.
No, no, that that itself was, but to do it, they said it's removing it. It's not putting those things back in. So you're cutting walls out to cut pipes out, but then you're not putting them back in.
One of the things that stood out at the onset of that presentation with regards to facilities was everything being equitable. All sites being equitable. A building was built in like, what, 19?
23.
29.
Yeah. It ain't going to be equitable.
No.
Right? I mean, it's an older building. So what can we do?
Well, that's the 16 million dollar portion, that's the lower one.
Equitability not being in. So I think facilities really has to push back on that plan before we can make a decision what to do with it.
So really, if you look at that, in the long run, I know, I know we don't want to spend forever on this and I'll just do it like this. Think of $600,000, right?
All right, make it quick, we're moving on.
Start at $600,000. Where can we get that $600,000? And again, my cliffhanger, I'll give you a little bit tonight of that.
Doesn't mean you can afford the car just because you can afford one payment.
No, 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 600,000 a year. I understand that. I understand that, but but it's 600,000, say 4 million of that comes off right away that we use in in these easier funds. Now, now you're down to $12 million, you're down to $450,000 that you need per year. If we can't come up with $450,000.
But we would have to reimburse the federal government, the easier money, the 4 million, because it's required a large percentage of it.
20. We'll be all right, that's why I said four instead of 5.2.
All right, Mr. Akmanovitz, Mr. Akmanovitz, Upper Buck Tech School, thank you.
I don't have anything to report on at this time. I just do want to remind everybody that the restaurant and the services are open at the tech school. So please make sure to check their website for available services and please check out the restaurant. And then I did want to point out a very nice congratulations and thank you, Chris, for bringing me up to Raymond Slickler. Raymond was named 2021 U.S. Presidential Scholar and I believe he is a student of Quaker Town High School. So I just wanted to make sure that I congratulated him during our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson, you have a few reports.
None of our committees met during between now and the last meeting, moving on.
Okay, moving on.
The Ed Foundation, by the way, for their help with the musical, because that is.
I mentioned now the last meeting, but that's why I did mention this one.
That's next week, so.
All right, I don't have any report. I did, I know that we recently celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. And so we, of course, we appreciate all of our teachers. Some of you might have missed it, that there was Nurses Appreciation Week as well. And so we know that our nurses have really put in. I was, I think it was like, it's like last week into this week. I think like yesterday or the day before was the end of it or something like that. So we do want to recognize our nurses for all of their tremendous effort this year for facing a pandemic. And, you know, I know at times that the nurses may have felt a bit overwhelmed with some of the decisions we made. But you know what? They they showed up every single day and they did their job super well. And so we just can't say how much we appreciate our nurses as well as our our educators. So just wanted to mention that. Next on the agenda is the election of board officers. So we have the election of board treasurer, election of board secretary and the appointment of substitute board secretary. And you can look in there for some more details.
Do we want to also commit Jen Gross to some new committees or appoint?
Not not tonight, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
So I I I think we have to make motions on all these, so I'll make.
I got to work tomorrow, people.
We have to make.
Yes, I had to get up at 4:30 AM for work, so.
I've made a motion to.
Army River.
Can I, can I do them all together or cannot? Oh, you're all separate, okay, I apologize, so.
I'll make a motion that we not make. I'll nominate, make a, yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint Lynn Rousen Board Treasurer.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion that we elect.
Elect Terry as Board Secretary.
Excuse me, I'll make a motion that we appoint Terry Fin Angelo as Board Secretary.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Really? Just like you guys keep me here till midnight.
Kaylin already forgot about her earlier meeting.
All right, did you have to wrap it in again? I felt bad enough, okay? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ron, you were on a roll there.
Make a motion that Ms. Eileen Finlayson is appointed as substitute board secretary.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. See, I'm getting fast with this stuff right now. Our next item on the agenda is the fiscal agenda. This one's important, will require a roll call vote. So I will need a motion to approve the proposed final budget for the 21, 22 fiscal year presented. And just so I can add a little bit of color there, the proposed final budget totals 117 million-ish. The amount includes 1 million in capital expenditures. The proposed military is, I'm not going to go through all that, but the increase is 3.5%. That's the biggest thing, the biggest takeaway from this. So I'll need a motion to to vote.
This is, oh, we'll make the motion first.
As presented. And and I think what you were going to probably make clear is that this is a preliminary budget and that we.
I'm seconding it first, now we can talk about it, yes.
That that we we still have time.
Kaylin.
Kaylin.
I did.
Yeah, you said I'd like to make a motion to.
I'm motion, that's fine. Chris?
This side of the room, it echoed down here, I'll second it.
Yeah, so so we still have time, guys, to, in the public, if anyone is still crazy enough to be still listening to us. We still have time to decide. So this, keeping it at the 3.5 just gives us more time and flexibility.
Correct. It's a, it's the sort of thing that we have to do because if we, if we put it at 0% and we need to bump it up due to some unforeseen circumstance, we're not allowed to do that. So this is just a I don't want to say Kabuki dance, but it's just a procedural thing that we do every year that don't get upset out there in the public. That we're not doing a 3.5% tax increase on this vote. We're just leaving it at the maximum. And then June 10th, tune in, speaking of cliffhanging hangers, for the real vote, for what taxes will really be.
So exciting. Okay, any other discussion? This will be a roll call vote, Terry, if you'd like to take it away.
And this is just for the budget or is this for both?
This is for the whole fiscal consent agenda.
No, 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 just item A.
Sorry.
Then, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Oh, he's having a tough time again.
Yes. I think it's crap.
He did vote yes, I heard him say yes. Yes.
No.
Did you, what did you vote, Keith? I don't even know. Oh, okay. I. Oh, that's what it was. Okay, the motion carries 71 and the next item is the Boucher and James List April 21. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Can I get a second? Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed or abstention?
Abstain.
Motion carries with one abstention. Next is the fiscal consent agenda. On that, we have the treasurer's report for April 21. Most of these are bills last April 21, budget transfer same, budget transfers beyond 2021 school year. Approved depositories for the 21, 22 school year, request for proposal for summer programs. Approved student athletic accident insurance renewal, proof compass group, Chartwell's Food Service Management Company renewal contract for next year. Chartwell proposed budget in meal prices for next year. The SSC addendum that we spoke about earlier and approval of the fixed asset appraisal agreement with Industrial Appraisal Company. What's that? So I'll need a motion for those items.
So moved.
Can I get a second? Discussion.
I I can someone explain to me why we're doing the authorized budget transfers beyond the school year? I I look back, I couldn't find that from before, so.
Yeah, it's true. We do that every year, so there's no board meetings after June 10th. So Lynn Rousen is the board treasurer, as we do the year-end close and has to transfer money. So it gives her the authority since you won't have a board meeting.
Thanks. I think one of the things to highlight was some something we discussed in the SSC discussion was their vacancy rates, about 28% and their turnover, 77% in one year. So staggering numbers. These are lower end jobs that I think people are hearing about in the community where they're tough to fill. They have high turnover. So I I do appreciate everybody voting yes to increase that minimum wage for them.
And hopefully it will it will allow for more consistent staffing and more retention.
I'm also very happy that we could pay more, maybe not a living wage quite yet, but more than what we were paying.
Getting closer.
Agreed.
Good points. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Next is the, we don't have anything on the, okay, human resources consent agenda. On that, we have professional staff, support, excuse me, support staff, musical pit musicians, appoint trustee to Bucks and Montgomery County Healthcare Consortium.
I'd like to make a motion to remove line A.
Okay, can I get a second for that?
You know somebody, is that why?
I'll sec, I'll second it.
Okay.
So there's two parts to this, actually, one, one is in. Okay. We can vote on B3.
Wait, we have to.
B3?
We have to vote to remove it.
Oh, okay.
Well, now we have discussion, which is what Chris was doing.
Yes.
Yeah, so so the reason I I voted to remove this is we did have a a public comment about this today as well. The, in in this line A, there's the hiring of a a combination orchestral and band teacher. And, you know, I I have looked into this as well. I heard about this from the band program before. And I've heard that this is not something that we want to do. If you had paid attention or remember all the way back to the beginning of this meeting, when Anita Boyer, who was the she's an orchestral director in another school district, mentioned that this is something that that one person cannot do both well. And we've been having a problem in our in our music program. Our our high school music program is going to go from 100 students, you know, 112 students this year, down to 40-some students in the next five years. You know, we have a real problem with kids not staying in, with with kids not staying engaged. And and I believe that having, and other people have told me as well, that by having two separate teachers for this, a separate band teacher, separate choir teacher, we had, you know, we were planning on hiring two teachers anyway. But what what the administration had proposed is hiring two combo teachers that teach both strings and band. But what, what the administration had proposed is hiring two combo teachers that teach both strings and band. I would propose we hire one band and one strings teacher.
So you would keep the FTEs the same?
Well, this, this teacher, yes. If this teacher, a, a, and here, here's the argument to this. Everybody, every teacher, every music teacher's qualified by the state to teach any music.
No, I understand.
Choir teachers can teach band, the band teachers can be quired.
You're not suggesting a, a different number of FTEs?
No, I'm still saying two FTEs.
Different focus.
One, one for strings, one for band.
Why was it proposed this way and not the way Chris suggested?
We had one retirement for band. And, um, they're trying to expand the strings program into the middle and high school, or into the high school, so they need more teachers to do that. So, by hiring two combination teachers, you're essentially getting four teachers for the price of two. But, in, in my eyes, you're getting, you know, you're watering down the program that has been watered down repeatedly in the past.
Fucking one teacher travel between the buildings.
They do that now. Yeah, they do that now. I mean, ultimately, will they wanna hire, will, will we want to hire more teachers moving forward for the strings program? Possibly, but, you know, that, that's been, that's been on, you know, that's been on the agenda ever since Dr. Harner brought the strings program in. We, we knew at some point the day of reckoning's gonna come where we have to hire teachers. Now, hiring com- combination teachers has been explained to me by most of the music staff that I spoke to.
But not our music department, sir.
Yes, our music, maybe not, maybe not.
Not the department chair, not the teachers that participated in the meetings, that, the teachers that you talked to don't even go to the meetings.
Okay, I talked to quite a few teachers. I talked to past teachers. I talked to orchestral teachers and band teachers from other districts about this. We had a public comment.
Sir, we can give you a job in HR. If you're, if, if, we have recommend, we are recommending the teacher who's the expert in strings but played in the marching band at Westchester.
She played in a band doesn't mean she can dedicate her resources to fully, fully doing both, and that's what we need.
Well, I, I appreciate your, your passion here, Chris, but, man, I mean, what if you cared about science or math or history? I, I just can't see usurping the authority of the administration and, and the other department folks who, that's their job. They know, you know, like, this is about hiring. I know we, we approve them, but, man, this just seems like micromanaging and, and, um, I don't know. I, that, to, to me, it's, it's not our place to, to necessarily know that much detail. And we need to trust that they are interviewing people and.
Well, I believe it was the board's place to initially institute this strings program. That never happened.
That's what we do. We're charged with.
By Dr. Harner as, as a rogue thing before.
The board approved it.
Yeah.
A music teacher.
No.
So that, that's a different.
Oh, I, I was at that meeting. In fact, I have my notes from that meeting.
That has nothing to do with it. We're here to talk about your, like, you know, I, I guess I don't feel you're an expert in this, and you might have talked to some experts, but with, they probably have axes to grind because that's why they, you know, reach out to you.
Excellent analogy here. Brian has a heart attack in the middle of this floor, right? I am certi, I am certified in CPR, right? Keith is sitting across the, across the aisle from me, right? I am certified in CPR. I can give Brian CPR, but Brian would much rather have Keith give him CPR. Somebody who's actually used it and has practice in it. If we're taking somebody who played in a marching band but taught violin before, I just pick the person.
Alright, so, so let me just summarize this, okay? I feel like it is a bit speculative. Um, we normally agree. But on this one, I have to say, I think it's a bit speculative to assume that this person is not skilled in those areas after the head of the departments and the administration have stated that's not the case.
The hiring process is up on the screen.
So, um, so let's just, let's just vote, and the vote is gonna be to remove that item. That's the, that's the motion on the table is to remove item A. So, a vote for yes is to remove it, a vote for no is to not remove it.
What if Chris is right? Does this belong to like a policy or an education meeting? Like, where would this be, where would this discussion actually take place?
What's all the teachers, right? We could have the algebra, algebra two teacher. I don't think they know algebra.
Like, you could have people that show up and, like, I, you know, I mean, where, where would somebody, I mean, 'cause we may have this happen in other, other lines of work, like, I agree that this is probably not, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we hire.
Where would one take this?
Yeah, it's a good question.
I think the education committee, wouldn't it? I would think the education committee.
Education, human resources.
I don't know, because we talk about, you know, what we're talking about in finance was, is there anything?
Right.
We're not the experts in it. Who's the experts? What do we need?
Right, we listen to the experts.
But the education committee would have voted on whether or not to, to establish a program. That being the strings or the music, whatever the music program, the strings program was.
It never did.
But again, we, you can go back to that one, that's irrelevant now. The question is, the, the, the education committee would simply approve the, the administration's recommendation to create a program. Now we're talking about who's hired to fill that program. That's one hundred percent administration role. They say this is the one who's the expert, that we judged to be the best person qualified to run the program you guys wanted to implement.
We did.
And now we want you, and all we want you to do is approve it. And now we're going, wait a second, that person's not good enough. How do you know? 'Cause I talked to somebody. I mean, please.
Ron, I have to say, I, I agree with you on this one. I, I think.
Not to yell.
There's times, there's certainly times where I would think that the board should be involved, and we can argue whether about the strings. We can argue all that, but the bottom line is, is that the people who are in charge of the, they have the, in charge of the music department, am I correct? And the administration both agree this person is the best person for the position. So the what aboutisms of what someone said, I, I don't know that it's relevant. It's just my opinion. He is. I love his passion.
Good, good passion about that. I respect it.
And I don't doubt you're wrong most, or right or wrong most of the time, even in this situation. But in this particular circumstance, where we are today, right now, the way it's proposed to us, I think you're by yourself.
We, we will be watering down further the instrumental music program.
I think that if you really feel passionate about that, then maybe the board, I mean, like, if you, 'cause it all boils back down to strings. So, it almost feels like you're saying that you want, you don't want that program anymore.
No, I, I'm not saying that. In fact, I, I'm saying that when Dr. Harner, when Ron Jackson in two thousand eighteen proposed to the board, or proposed to the board, yes, for them, for the administrat, proposed to the administration to hire another music teacher. That was in, that was asked for by the music department to fill a high school position. Ron Jackson asked for that position. Dr. Harner said, okay, I will, will, I would like to hire a math teacher.
I remember, yeah.
Forward with hiring your, your band teacher, your music teacher, but let me choose where they go. He did, and he chose a strings program. No, we're not gonna rush this. We need to do it. Don't worry about the time. So.
We're AED.
So.
Yes.
I took extensive notes that night. So, so, so I, I even brought up in a public comment that.
Chris, you can have to wrap it up, dude, 'cause you're like the only one who is gonna vote in favor of this, and that's clear.
Madam Secretary, Madam President, I call the motion. I call the motion.
I'll second that. End discussion.
All those in favor say aye? Aye.
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 We're, we're voting on ending this deliberation.
No, there's, a motion and a second ends it, right?
No, you have to vote.
I motioned to, to remove it.
You're tabling, you're taking this off the agenda. You don't want to.
No, she's talking about the ability, the ability to end discussion. When someone says, when someone calls the motion, you end discussion, don't you?
All the question ends in discussion.
Boom.
I already have a motion on the table.
Okay, so, so.
So the motion on the table that we're voting for is to remove item A.
Vote yes, you remove item A. If you vote no, you do not.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion fails.
Did you pull it out of consideration to consider it separately, yes or no?
I don't understand. What was the yes? The yes was to remove it from the consent agenda and vote separately. That went down to defeat, so now it's included in your consent agenda on the first note.
Back to where we started.
In other words, we're voting on the whole package and not separating out the music teacher.
I didn't, and, and to be clear, my opposition wasn't to not hire this music teacher. This, my option was to say, what I was going to do once it was pulled out, was to say that we would.
I've been trying so hard not to cut people off.
But we would hire a different one.
You have been heard. Okay. Love you, buddy. Moving on. He wasn't here. Just pretend he wasn't here for the vote, then. Keep him off.
So do we need a, do we need a motion now?
Yeah, go ahead, say it.
Yes, yes. Okay, I'm not even gonna go through that, then. Uh, discussion. Human resources consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Next is the policy and programs consent agenda. There's quite a few waivers on here, so I'm not gonna read through all of those. Also have contract between Cape May County Special Services, um, and Bucks County Intermediate Unit. And there is also a settlement agreement that's in here as well, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
What is the Cape May County Special Services?
Janet, would you please elevate Janet? Pull on.
Poor Janet, she's, she was.
Nope, it's fine.
She's like, I'm outta here.
That's for a student's extended school year programming.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's for a student's extended school year programming, ESY.
Oh, okay.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Some information items for the board to review is the high school suspension report. There's an enrollment report and transportation renewal with Plumstead Christian School. And, um, we have any new business from the board?
Yes, I have one. Oh, give me that, my boss. Okay, so my new business is my cliffhanger that I had you all waiting for before. I would like to make a motion to cancel the hiring of a transportation coordinator for our district office. In speaking with Zach and, um, and other people, this, this is an item that's a luxury item for our district. This provides us with somebody that people could call in our building. But, this is a six-figure salary position, well, not six-figure total cost position. I believe it was eighty thousand dollar salary, when you add Peasars and benefits in there. It, i- in light of current, um, financial projects that we have coming up, I, I can't see spending, you know, another hundred, a hundred thousand plus dollars on something that would be nice to have in, in this office. Something that Warren Levy has provided us for thirty-some years and will continue to provide us at no additional cost.
That's not true, though.
I'll second it just for the discussion.
No, it is absolutely true. I confirmed it with Zach before.
Well, Chris, just, just to, for a point of clarity, okay, when we voted to approve the Levy contract, did you vote to approve it?
Yes.
Okay, um, Zach, for a point of clarity, this position was in that contract. The, the, the concept to hire this individual and staff them
Was a recommendation.
Was part of that vote, wasn't it?
No. It was part of that voting that night.
Correct. So, no, but again, so we.
Approved the FTE.
The board approved the FTE, so you approved during that vote to hire this individual.
During the night, there was a separate vote, and I did not approve hiring this individual, but, that's irrelevant. The board did.
About something you, you, uh, voted against it.
He could certainly vote.
No.
Yeah, that's true. It's Robert's rules.
That doesn't make any, private rules is not the law.
Yeah.
I, I apologize.
Yeah.
For the board members here who, who may suddenly disagree and say that Chris is right. I mean, you either approved it when you approved the, the contract with Levy, or you didn't. And, and again, you approved the money, you approved the contract, and now you're saying, oh, on, on second thought, no.
Yes.
Well, the reason for this is that the person at Levy that does this now is retiring.
And they have somebody to refill this position.
And it was, it was part of, it was part of the presentation that this would, something that would be beneficial to the school district.
Would be.
Moving fo, would be, moving forward as far as bringing that in-house.
Well, then, let's vote for it. That's all. I mean, you guys can ask.
Well, the point is, I think the point that behind Steve is, there's, there's more than one side. You presented a very biased side, and we're not, you know, the PASBO, uh, person who helped the, the committee to decide the Levy bus thing. He pointed out all kinds of benefits from having that person in the, you know, he all but guaranteed the return on investment is huge to have that person in-house, so.
Plus the, the auditor general says it's best practice. It, it, if you recall, our, the PASBO executive director, who was our consultant, said it was, uh, best practice. And, uh, we got gigged on our last audit, um, because we didn't have our own in-house accountability. And if we give it over, back, give that position back to Levy, then Zach is now the transportation director.
That's what I was, that's what I was thinking, actually, with no raise, right? Um, my point was, though, we figured in certain amount of savings with that contract because we were gonna hire somebody to fill that role, right, internally, correct?
Yes, it depends, like, part of what we did is we worked with Warren on his proposal and asked him to, to work on bringing those numbers down because we knew we wanted to do some of these things. So I think that's what you're referring to.
You knew you wanted to do these things.
Well, correct. It came out of the recommendations from PASBO, and we knew it was, uh, something the auditor general brought up.
The bottom line, and it's not a bad topic, guys, is the fact, it, it's a good discussion for us to have when we're at a time where we're having so many things that we're looking at as first cost drivers is, um, look, Warren is saying to, at least to Chris, that he doesn't need this position and that they have been doing it this whole time. They have someone they're gonna backfill. And, the opposite side of that is, uh, what the administration has shared, which is, we need it and that the auditor general recommends it. So, the board needs to just figure out what you wanna do, because it is gonna cost us a good chunk of change.
When does this person need to be hired, bud?
Zach, will you want to talk where you're at in the interview process?
Well, yeah, since the board approved it, uh, whenever that was, a month or so ago, we did post it. We got applications. We've gone through a first round, and we're in the process of scheduling second round interviews.
What is the pressing issue for us to hire this person this year?
Well, it takes a while to, to develop the routes for the fall. It's not something they can walk in, in a month to go and have it done.
From what I understood, Levy was still developing routes for next fall.
Was for this person to be hired to provide the supervision of the program and also, um, work with Alan Rosenberger, who does a lot of this function over there, the routing function. It basically is, it's the oversight of the routes. We are counting on Levy Bus to tell us this is the max. We're getting the most out of value out of the number of buses that we're using every year with the best routes, best timing and all that. This person that bring in this position inside the district, we create the routes and they have to execute them. And that's where the accountability comes. That's where we own the routes. And that's where we got gigged before by the, um, what auditing office was that?
Yeah, it was just the state audit. They, they recommend that somebody in-house does routing, 'cause that's what drives your costs.
And I was gonna say, is the argument also from the administration that the person that we bring in-house will have a return on investment because they will make these routes efficient and therefore.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Plus, that person's the.
Efficient to a hundred thousand dollars a year, plus?
I don't know.
Listen, I, I, I just think, I mean, I do agree with Chris. He's, he brings up a good point. And one of the points that we, I know we're rushing, and I know it's eleven o'clock, and I know we're all irritable. The bottom line is.
What time is it?
Every time, it's eleven o'clock. Every time we vote yes on these things, and every time we vote to hire an FTE, you are adding to the budget deficit. It is a consistent message. I've been saying this all along, that as you add these things, then you have to understand, a hundred thousand dollars a year, right, ten positions takes care of the nighting, uh, or QE renovations.
Well, six, six, not ten.
Whatever.
Oh, maybe.
Right, we want, we, we, we talk about mental health and hiring, I mean, these. I mean, these are, these are the discussions we, that are real. Like, teachers in the classroom versus a transportation person. That's a real conversation to have, right? All-day kindergarten versus transportation. Like, you can't have everything. So we got, Chris's point has to be well-taken. We have to digest it.
Yeah.
I feel like sometimes, and I agree that, you know, that, that presentation was, I would love to see, and I, and I don't remember it off the top of my head, what the ROI was on the cost savings associated with it. But like we were talking about in, in, in finance with regards to understanding our enrollment, we elected not to go with the company to save 15,000 or 20,000 and go back to the way we were doing it. So that, I think that's Chris's point, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
And then that brings Dave's point. What's the urgency to hire this person now?
Yeah, like what happens if we don't?
Because I think. Do it three years.
You know, again, we're talking out both sides of our mouth, because we gave them direction, the administration direction, and said, this is where we're going. So they went in that direction, and now we're saying, thanks for going in that direction, but we want you going here. We sound a little bit like, uh.
I'm not, I'm not, you're, you're not wrong, but at the same time, whenever you get more information, you know, like I, I think we made that decision at that point. At least I was okay with it because I did not realize that those services could continue to work through Levy. I thought that they were no longer available.
Well, no, I mean, okay, maybe, maybe I'm the one person who understood, because it was pretty clear to me that Levy, Warren's company, was saying they could do it. They were doing it fine. Even though Alan was retiring, Levy was still planning on doing it himself. It was no mystery to me that Levy, hang on a second, just let me, let me finish. It was no mystery to me that Levy was saying he could do it and he can keep doing it. And it was also no mystery to me that the recommendation out of the PASBO individual and from this administration was no, we would like to do it in-house. So when I voted on the contract, it was no mystery to me. I was saying, we were gonna hire this person at, I don't know, 150, well, let's say 175 with benefits, I don't know what it is. We were gonna hire this individual. It was no mystery to me. I don't know why it was a mystery to everybody else all of a sudden.
Okay, well, you're just smarter than all of us.
I think what's happening is we're feeling the pressure of the.
Right, there you go.
Budget tightening down. And us asking for lower that tax, lower the taxes. Ron, great guy, but you, you can't have everything, right? You, you're, you're, you're the one over here pounding, I don't want to increase taxes. And then, and, and on the other side, we're saying, how can we cut spending? And you, you continue to spend. You have to be mindful of both.
Right, but we just did it. I mean, this, again.
I don't care that we just did it. We're just getting the preliminary budget. We just did the preliminary budget now.
We still have time, guys. We didn't hire the person.
We're just getting the all-day kindergarten discussions going. I get it. That discussion was like three months ago. Like, things have changed.
Okay, um.
I, I would like to make a motion to vote on this now.
Well, I already seconded you a long time ago.
Okay, let's take a vote.
So the vote would be to.
Remove the, the full-time position for a transportation.
Is that how we worded, Jeff?
What does Zach think about? Do we actually have coverage? If we don't do it, it's just gonna magically happen?
We don't even have a person, so.
Many days of extra week. So if you removed it, correct, Levy School Bus would continue to do those services.
Will they charge us more? No.
Will they charge us more? No, we would not have oversight over it.
Can we remove it just for the committee and then take it back to committee and have a discussion outside of this?
It's like a freeze or something.
So that we all understand, because I have no, I, I need to understand the ramifications of removing it as well.
They may hire somebody before the next committee meeting. That's why I wanted to.
I think he's saying, let's remove it now, talk about it in the committee.
But I, I, I don't think we have all the information. I think, you know, by making a rat, you know, a rash decision based on sort of the pressures we're feeling tonight may not be the best answer. If we, can we delay it from, I mean, would it, would it impede you guys drastically if we just delayed voting on it?
Well, no, it's not on the agenda. I brought this up as.
It's already in, it's already voted on.
It's already voted on and in motion, so if, if we don't do something before next time, they may hire, they may, you know.
They have the ability to. Okay, they have the ability to. Let's.
The board has to approve the actual hiring.
Yeah, you could say no.
We don't know with the name of.
But I prefer them not to string anybody along.
Right. So, so.
All right. I'm not. So here's the thing, if we really wanna start saving money, this is the type of things that I said we should look into. You know, if, if you can save $175,000 cutting one FTE, we, we may be able to get the 600,000 for QE and, and another 200,000 for the ball field.
Jeff, how do we work this?
Or save money and lower taxes. What about that?
Can't do anything with what.
Although I support you, Chris, I can't support the vote.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is to direct the administration to suspend the hiring of the transportation director, remove it from the budget and from the approval, approved FTE.
What he said.
We need to do those last two parts. I think we're just asking them to suspend the hiring for the time being.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion to suspend the hiring for the time being until we can dig more into the details.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So now you wanna direct the administration that when they're knee-deep in the, in the interview process, you want them to stop?
Well, I have to be honest, no disrespect, Dr. Harner, but I, I just, I just heard from you not long ago that we didn't have any solid, like, candidates, so did something happen within?
And I heard Zach a couple seconds ago said he had like a couple rounds of interview already.
They're going to second rounds the next, week after next.
All right, well, look, Ron, you don't have to vote in favor of it.
No, Kaylin, Kaylin, I, I believe we, we should vote to remove this.
I, I am voting to, we already had a motion on the floor, voting to, a motion to suspend, and it was seconded. Suspend, it doesn't mean, it just means for the time being.
What happened to Chris's motion?
That's what I said.
Chris's motion.
Did it get seconded?
And it was, it was seconded, we're having discussion.
I did, so then how do you remove that?
Well, he doesn't want to remove it.
No, I, I, I think we should vote on that. Removing that position from the FTE, from.
Can I remove my second? Because I seconded it.
You can withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second.
Does anybody else want a second?
Does anybody else want a second voting on removing this item now?
No one wants to second it, so our motion.
Second it.
Okay. He wants to vote it down. He wants to vote it down, but then, Kaylin, you can still make your motion afterwards.
All right, I'm gonna need help with all this.
Oh, my God. Don't you love doing this, Jen, already? Um. I will, can I motion to amend the motion?
You can move to amend.
Wait, I will move my second to throw it back in, in the wind.
Get him. All right, well, then, nobody else is gonna second. I'll put my motion back on the floor to suspend until, I know, you, poor Terry, she deserves some chocolate. I will motion to suspend the hiring of this person on.
This was gonna happen.
Hiring process.
Until further action of the board.
There you go, to, till further action of the board.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion. Actually, we're gonna vote. Anybody?
Wait, so, so again, you, you want to tell the administration when they're knee-deep in the process that they need to stop until we discuss it further?
Yes, Ron.
Yes.
Okay.
Without the knee-deep part.
Yeah, I mean, anyway, all right. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
No.
That's the end of the.
Wait, how many nos?
I think we need to do a roll. I think it was just three.
Three vote, three nos. It was Mr. Klein, Mr. Jackson, and Mr. Kern.
I, this, with the motion in, in movement already, I, I have to, and, and this, I have to vote right now, no.
And Mr. Macucci.
We're gonna have to re, we're gonna have to readdress this.
Well, that, that's what Kaylin's.
Well, it doesn't matter, the motion passed. Five to four.
They voted to suspend the hiring.
Only four voted no, five voted yes.
Yeah.
Did it?
It passed. Did it, did I, there was four nos, did I miss it? You guys, you guys, this is so much fun. You wanna stay here another hour? I know, I'm just kidding. I'm, I'm lightening the mood.
The motion passed for us to delay it and then revisit it at some other time.
It's five minutes. I did.
All right, is everybody good? Because I hear a lot of talking. No?
I, I have one piece and new business, if I may.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'm not looking to, you know, dig up a pass vote and revote, so.
Why not?
Earlier today, I passed out a copy of an article from the Philadelphia Inquirer, and I put a copy at everybody's place. And the gist of the article talks about a Secret Service study that found similarities in many mass attacks at schools and planned mass attacks at schools. And I read the article, and I, it just really resonated with me that most of, you know, the high-profile attacks that we're all aware of, think Columbine, Sandy Hook and all that, that there were the same signs being presented by the person that did the attack. Okay? Now, I know with mental health being at the forefront right now with, with everything